The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
Hey, good morning, everyone. We are opening up the quorum vote, roll call vote right now. Please hit refresh and mark yourselves present. I will now call on those who have not marked themselves present at this time. Alderperson Robinson, not present. Alderman Hall, Alderman Hall is present. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell is present. Alderwoman Coleman, not present. Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore is present. Alderman Mosley. Alderman Mosley is present. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Rodriguez, not present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Ramirez Rosa is present. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is present. One second. Are they all marked? Do you have Gardner? Hey, everyone who is in chambers has been marked present. The voting is now closed. We will.
Thank you very much. There are forty-three members that are present in chamber. Seven are absent. We do have a quorum. Alders Taylor, Burnett, Silverstein, and Curtis have requested to participate in today's meeting remotely under Rule Fifty-Nine because of family emergencies. Alderman Lopez, do you care to make a motion?
Good morning, Mr. President. I move. In accordance with our rules and procedures, we allow Alderman Taylor, Silverstein, Curtis, and Burnett to participate remotely.
Thank you. All those in favor in the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the chairs, in the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered today by Pastor Corrin D. Lassenby of the Pilgrim Baptist Church of South Chicago.
Shall we pray? Lord, I come to you today. Lord, I stand in boldness, seeking your face. Lord, that this meeting not just be another meeting, but, Lord, we come because lives are depending on the progress that would happen today. And we ask, God, that you would remove anything that would hinder the flow of progress to happen on today. And so, Lord, today, look on our city right now, the one that we care about, the city that we brag about, the city that we love. And, Lord, touch the hearer today. Let this prayer touch the heart of those, God, who make the decisions. Lord, look on every department, Lord, that has a responsibility that would treat our citizens, God, as with dignity. And, Lord, right now, Lord, I lift up our mayor, Mayor Brandon Johnson, to you today. Lord, you created him in your energy and after his own likeness. And so, Father, right now, Lord, I ask that you would lead him, guide him, surround him, Lord, with those who have godly advice for all and not some. And so, Lord, right now, Lord, I speak to the heart of the fifty public servants, Lord, who have been chosen to represent those in their community. And, Lord, I pray, Lord, that you look on their families, protect them from hurt, harm, and danger. Lord, I say to you today, Lord, we come against any spirit that is not like you. We bind the enemy right now on every side. And so, God, you said in your word, Lord, if my people, which are called by my name, would humble themselves and pray and seek my face, then I'll turn, they'll turn from their wicked ways, and you'll hear from heaven. And, God, right now, forgive them from their sins. And so, Father, right now, heal our city right now. Lord, heal it into the city hall. Go to the west side and heal. Heal on the north side. Heal on the south side. And, God, don't forget the east side. We bless you, and we give your name glory. And, God, right now, we'd be forever more grateful to you for everything that you've done, doing, and shall do. In Jesus' name, we pray and say, amen.
You may be seated. I would ask that the clerk please add the members who are participating remotely to the roll. This is the portion of the meeting for public comments.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. The first speaker today is Jennifer Soto.
Jennifer, please press star six to unmute.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. I recently heard violence is the language of the inarticulate and the misinformed, therefore we become articulate to follow in the ways of nonviolence. Palestinian blockades started in nineteen forty-eight, leaving fifteen thousand Palestinians slaughtered and seven hundred and fifty thousand from a one-point-nine-million population displaced, only recently being recognized as the Nakba. Nineteen sixty-seven, Israel slaughtered twenty thousand Palestinians, claiming more Palestinian land, slaughtering thousands more, but is not acknowledged, allowing Israel to seize more land and implement more blockades. Two thousand and five, Israel publicly implements a temporary blockade, which was already in place and made permanent in two thousand and nine. This is known as an illegal occupation of an open-air prison, which is now extended to the West Bank as of last week, and destroying water mains, grocery stores, homes, roads. And only yesterday did Israel inform the U.S. of their recent plan to extend to the West Bank, but they were already there. Sound familiar? Gaza. Israel restricts imports, exports, electricity, medicine, and water. The Palestinian occupation of water was enacted in nineteen sixty-seven, making it a criminal offense for Palestinians to extract water from wells or even collect rainwater. You all have implemented your unwavering support for Israel with no conditions, with an exception of one of you. Your support allows Israel to exterminate over eight thousand Palestinians, displace two-point-five million, and take over two thousand hostages that have been beaten, stripped naked, and dragged through the rubble like Emmett Till in a span of two weeks, hundreds unaccounted for under the rubble. Your laws have made Israel above the law, and no one is above the law. Your unwavering support has equally caused a ripple effect of hate. One being six-year-old Wadia, who lost his life by the hands of a friend because of a newfound hatred for Palestinians, being stabbed twenty-eight times. His final words to his mother were, "I'm okay." Is that your unwavering support? Richmond, California passed a resolution in support of Palestinians and condemned Israel of ethnic cleansing and collective punishment. I equally request that you propose a resolution in solidarity with the Palestinians and condemn Israel for the acts of collective punishment and violation of international law in committing genocide. Call for an immediate ceasefire and humanitarian aid. You are obligated to consider the plea of the people, considering the United States is funding billions of taxpayer dollars to support this genocide of Palestinians before your eyes, to condemn Israel of heinous acts of collective punishment, which have led to an apartheid state of seventy-five years illegally claiming the vast majority of Palestine. Congress serves the people. If you haven't noticed, the people don't support this mass genocide. Only the backdoor dealings of Congress do. A proposed resolution is an effort to bring together communities, showing you are listening and doing fact stand for the American people. Your duty is to do better than those before you, to learn from past mistakes, make better choices in making the world a peaceful place for our children and generations to come, in hopes to one...
Ms. Soto, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Anthony Paris.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Epiphany Paris, but everybody calls me Pip. I'm with One North Side, and I live in the Forty-Eighth Ward. I was homeless for six weeks with my child, who was four years old at the time. What most people don't realize about being homeless is how much work it is to do basic activities. Even in my situation, which was better than some, basic survival questions consumed my mind every day. Where will we sleep tonight? Where will we brush our teeth? Where will we poop? How can we avoid dangerous people? How can we avoid heat stroke? How can we keep our clothes clean and dry, even in the rain? So many people like to shout at homeless people to get a job, and they ignore completely how hard it is to do that, even under the best of circumstances, and how hard it is when you don't have a roof, shower, fridge, bed, electricity, running water, or internet. When your whole being is focused on the next meal, on finding ways to get clean, there's not a lot of capacity for hunting job vacancies, filling out applications, or getting to an interview. The solution to homelessness is housing. With housing, basic needs get easier to meet, and it becomes more possible to get all the other pieces together. The city needs far more affordable housing. We need dedicated revenue to create affordable housing and supportive services for the more than sixty-eight thousand Chicagoans experiencing homelessness. Bring Chicago Home creates exactly that, and without hurting regular working-class people. This small fee that is only on property sales over one million dollars will help people who are struggling to keep their heads over water, and the people who are paying these fees will barely be impacted. Yesterday, the Rules Committee voted to move this resolution forward, and today I am asking you to please pass Bring Chicago Home.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is David Herrera.
David, please press star six to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Welcome.
Hello?
We can...
Hello?
We can hear you.
Sorry, my phone was muted. All right. Well, thanks for allowing me to speak to you today, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. As you are aware, last week, two residents of the Smith Park neighborhood of Westtown filed a lawsuit against the city of Chicago, the mayor, two of its appointed department heads, which include the Department of Buildings and Department of Planning and Development. The owner of the, and the owner of the industrial building at five-twenty-six Northwestern Avenue that the city wants to use as a shelter for two hundred people. Originally, we were told that this was for two hundred men, and we were not allowed community input as normal due process would require, under current city ordinance, laws, rules, and regulations. Some background about our area is appropriate, as we are a neighborhood of many immigrants. For more than a hundred fifty years, the Westtown area has been home to thousands of immigrants, including, but not limited to, Ukrainians, Polish, Italian, Russian Jews, Germans, and Scandinavians. In the second half of the twentieth century, Westtown became a Latino Puerto Rican neighborhood, first for Puerto Ricans and then Mexicans. My mother's family migrated from Puerto Rico to Chicago in the mid-nineteen fifties. My father's family, from Mexico to Chicago in nineteen seventy. I am pro-immigration, but in a legal and orderly fashion. What we are seeing play out at the border with the buzzing, busing of migrants to Chicago is far from orderly, and it puts the lives of many at risk, particularly, particularly the migrants. Furthermore, with the Russian invasion of Ukraine in twenty-twenty-two and the recent unrest in Latin America, another wave of immigrants have come to call Westtown home. It is estimated that Chicago has received upwards of twenty-nine thousand Ukrainian refugees, and scorched them. Join us now in Westtown. For those that say we have not taken in our fair share of migrants, that's not true. Many live amongst us now, and they have been over the last several years. In the past year, many Latin American migrants seeking asylum also have settled in Westtown. The fact is immigrants have come from around the world to Westtown, Chicago, and the U.S., because we are a democracy built on the foundation that the rule of all will equally provide opportunity, safety, and security to all. Certainly, that is no longer the case. We, as citizens, we have a voice as well, and also where are our rights as taxpayers? We have rights and a voice. So you've left us no other choice but to sue this city of Chicago. In more than a century and a half, it's never, the municipal government has maybe never wielded its executive emergency powers to piding up...
Mr. Herrera, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Robert Ferreira.
Yeah, hello. Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Welcome. We can hear you.
Yes. Okay, I'm ready to begin. Hello, my name is Robert Ferreira. I am a resident within the Back of the Yards community, and I would like to have a moment of your time to advocate for the public library that should be within this neighborhood. Having grown up in this community, I attended the Back of the Yards College Preparatory High School. And while I had a good experience there, I can vividly remember that a major concern and annoyance for both myself and my fellow classmates was that the public library was attached to the school. That space was originally designed for it to be the library for the high school, was not meant solely for us. Instead, it was turned into a public library where everyone could attend except the students during the school day. And what the students had to do instead was either wait until the end of the, of the school day to access the public library, because CPS and Chicago Public Libraries have different policies regarding the safety that made the students unable to use it during school hours. To make up for this, the school made us use a very small and limited room within the school itself that essentially acted as a stand-in for our school library. The school itself is a very modern one, and it was only recently constructed in twenty thirteen. As such, the library itself is also a modern one that the students should have the right to have access to. The model is even designed with three thematic components: body, mind, and spirit, where spirit represents the library, arts, and music that are supposed to be held within the space that was taken from the high school for a public colocation. While some may believe that the keeping, that keeping the library that is attached and occupies space from the school to be a good choice, I believe that such a decision compromises the ability to fully serve both the students and the public. If there was a new library for the public, not only would the students have access to their own library space, but the general public would also have a library that would not only be bigger, but in a much more convenient location with appropriate parking and full programs. I appreciate your time, and I strongly urge you to support the new library requests that are only growing louder and more frequent within my community. Back of the Yards has a history of being underserved from the city, but thanks to State Representative Tressama and her fight for the fifteen-million-dollar fund, now is a good time to listen to the community and to invest in a standalone building for a public library. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jody Whitaker.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Jody Whitaker, and I'm the Executive Director of the Chicago Alliance for Animals, and I live in Forty-Ninth Ward. On behalf of CAA's more than three thousand members, I'm testifying today to urge you to put your support behind and co-sponsor oh, twenty-twenty-three dash two-nine-eight-three, the bill to ban the sale of new fur products in Chicago. Here are just a few but very pressing reasons to support this humane measure. Animals who are slaughtered for their fur endure tremendous suffering. Animals raised on fur farms typically spend their entire lives in cramped and filthy cages. Fur farmers typically use the cheapest killing methods available, including suffocation, electrocution, gas, and poison. Fur farms are reservoirs and transmission vectors for dangerous zoonotic diseases, including SARS coronaviruses that threaten public health, including in the city. COVID-nineteen infections have been confirmed at fur farms in Europe and the United States, and scientific studies have linked mink, raccoon dogs, and foxes, the animals most commonly farmed for their fur, to a variety of coronaviruses. The fur production process is energy-intensive and has a significant environmental impact, including air and water pollution. Runoff from the fur production process contains high concentrations of phosphorus and nitrogen, which are the most common forms of water pollution in the United States. Nationalgeographic.com posted a very powerful article in February of twenty twenty-one detailing the link between fur farming, coronaviruses, and COVID. It was titled, "What the Mink COVID-nineteen Outbreaks Taught Us About Pandemics." The byline reads, "The spread of the coronavirus has exposed troubling problems at fur farms and how we respond to outbreaks there." There are so many reasons to see this bill through, so I truly hope you will join, sponsor Alderperson Raymond Lopez and co-sponsors Alders, Lenny, Mana, Hoppinworth, Jessica Fuentes, Bennett Lawson, and Julia Ramirez, and support and co-sponsor this compassionate and common sense measure and pass this bill soon. Thank you very much for your time and consideration today.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker today is Natasha Dunn.
Hi, my name is Natasha Dunn, and I am from South Shore. Far too long, Black, and let me start off by saying, I mean, we are in solidarity with Brighton Park. We're in solidarity with Emmonson Park. We're in solidarity with Ukrainian Village, the Smith Park people, the guy who just spoke. We're all in solidarity. For far too long, Black neighborhoods have been ignored and locked out of the economic access that many other demographics enjoy. Black unemployment is twice the national average. Black seniors have the highest, Black seniors have the highest foreclosure rate. Black neighborhoods have had the highest school closure rates, and we have the highest socially engineered violence. Yet, the city's twenty-twenty-four budget does not target specific investments for the Black South and West sides of Chicago. Instead, it prioritizes the migrants' population over needy, over needy Chicagoans. The city is on target for spending over four hundred million on migrants in twenty-twenty-three. And this country has a history of systemic racism, specifically toward Black Americans, bringing in low-skill workers who are, sometimes in the past, have replaced Black Americans. To protect Black lives and prevent the continued systemic racism from impacting our community, we demand the following of you, Mr. Johnson, Mayor Johnson, and City Council members who are sitting here, specifically the ones who represent the South and the West Side Black neighborhoods. We want you, Mayor Johnson, to sign immediately an executive order to end sanctuary cities and turn the buses around, stop them. You do not have the resources. We got babies laying on the floor in police stations. That is inhumane. It's inhumane to put people in tents in Chicago when we have sub-zero temperatures. It's even more inhumane for you to put tents in Black neighborhoods that's dealt with systemic racism for decades. That is triggering to us. We are upset in these meetings because we've, we're done with dealing with the systemic racism. We're done with being ignored. And if you claim that you care about Black lives, stop talking about it. We are not a headline, and we are not a hashtag. We are humans, and we want and deserve the parity and equality and equity that we deserve. Number two, no housing migrants in closed school buildings, park field houses, Emmonson Park, and tents, Roseland, and any other Black neighborhood impacted by redlining systemic racism, and it has an area median income of less than forty thousand dollars. All buses for migrants, and both know...
Ms. Dunn, thank you. Ms. Dunn, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next, our next speaker today is Linda Peralis.
Good morning. My name is Linda Peralis. I'm a bilingual special education teacher. Currently, I'm lead from the classroom and an organizer at CTU. I'm a lifelong Chicagoan, born and raised in Gage Park, and recently had the privilege of buying a home in the same neighborhood. Every morning on my way to work, I pass the Gage Park Field House that is being used as a temporary shelter... as a temporary shelter for migrants, and I pass an orange tent of a longtime Chicagoan that has claimed the corner of Western and Pershing as his home. We have 68,000 unhoused Chicago residents. We've had a housing crisis this, that that many previous mayors have ignored for far too long. Thank you for having the will to do the right thing, finally. Thank you for taking on the challenges that this great city has inherited. While other speakers who are GOP supporters, who aim to divide, who consistently show up for Fox News, will try to shame this administration, please know that this is a minority. Polls have consistently shown that the city of Chicago wants to house the homeless.
Please stop the time.
We fundamentally care of the people, not politics. I have immense gratitude for the Rules Committee.
One moment, Ms. Peralas. Just one moment, please. Ms. Peralas, you can please continue, thank you.
Thank you. I have immense gratitude for the Rules Committee who are letting the people decide on whether we want to bring Chicago home. In less than six months, we've seen you do what no other mayor or city council was willing to do for our long-term unhoused Chicago residents. For far too long, we've been operating with only $35 million for shelters. Having $150 million annually for Bring Chicago Home will go a long way to create permanent housing. We have open 20-plus shelters around the city, that's no small feat, and Bring Chicago Home aims to help both long-term Chicago residents and new residents. I know we're ready to bring Chicago home. As a teacher, I had to witness far too many students tell me they didn't have a place to do homework, they couldn't sleep because they didn't have a room, they had to move or they were being evicted, parents struggling to keep their families together when they couldn't afford the rent in their neighborhood anymore. Stable housing means stable schools. We know our children are the future, let's act like it. I hope that folks know that Chicago residents care about everyone. Don't fall for the real estate lobbies or for divisions. Don't fall thinking that the rent is going to go up or developers are leaving. The fact is that we need Bring Chicago Home, and there is enough for everyone, and we need to, we need to demand that at the state and federal level as well. We do not need division, we need unity. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker today is LaShawn Wallace.
In order for us to conduct, excuse me, in order for us to conduct a dignified meeting, I would respectfully ask that during the comments, that you refrain from disrupting the comments. If you're going to continue to shout me down, I'm going to ask that Sergeant-at-Arms remove you, okay? I thank you very much. Please. Thank you very much, please.
Our next speaker is LaShawn Wallace.
Good morning, my name is LaShawn Wallace, and I live and work in the God Field area. I'm here as a representative of Chicago Teachers Union. I'm here today to support of Bring Chicago Home. I'm excited that Chicago is about to make history again. Thank you to the Rules Committee for making a bold move yesterday. Yesterday, 32 alderwomen and men voted yes to democracy, to allow the people of Chicago to decide whether we wanted to have dedicated revenue streamed to house the homeless. The longtime residents of Chicago have been dealing with the Chicago housing crisis long enough, and I'm assured that Chicago voters will vote yes overwhelmingly to helping people sleeping in the streets, double up, and who have no idea where they are sleeping tonight. As long as a longtime West Side resident, I've seen so many administrations ignore the issues of the West Side. So thank you for doing the right thing. There are others who speak today about not wanting this administration or disagreeing, but they only seek to confuse our people about what we should do in this moment of crisis. As a God-fearing person, we know that we must help those that are persecuted and are treated unjustly. And my church has decided to adopt a migrant family and show how to be in true solidarity. We should focus on the things that unite us and support a mayor that understands the issues Black people face. As Mayor Hale Washington knew that we needed to be a sanctuary city, we thank you for finding the funding to be a true, to be true in solidarity. We are already an expensive city. This would help stabilize rents by reducing taxes, this would keep families in Chicago as this ordinance would lower taxes for over 95% of the current homeowners. Please vote yes for our students to bring Chicago home.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker this morning is Diane Landrow. Our next speaker this morning is Diane Landrow. Our next speaker this morning is Linda Johnson.
Good morning, good morning, my name is Linda Johnson. I am a resident of the Austin community, and I'm here to talk about, I hate the fact that we're in here looking like we divided. I hate the fact that it's us against them, because that is not the issue. It is not us against them, it's us against the way you are doing this thing. You're doing this thing wrong, and you cannot, I would repeat again and again, fix a leaking fountain while the fountain is running, and you don't want to stop the border, and that's sad, but whoever is making this planning decision, putting these people in our park is wrong, and it's wrong, wrong, wrong. I don't care what you say, you want to use the park, use that 68 million building on 48th and Western, and they got 17 acres over there, use that, house them so you can follow them. You cannot follow people if you put them everywhere, and that's all we're saying. You took our park, you stopped our programming, I'm a senior, you think I want to be down here doing this? No, I want to enjoy the logo of the park, come out and play, but I can't come out and play because you stopped all our program. You put a hole on it, you sent the employees to different places, so we can't do anything in the park. Most of those seniors walk to our park. Our park is in the heart of our community, we're bungalows and too flat. We are in that, we've been there for 37 years, and we got the nerve, we got to get this stuff crammed down our throat because you don't think about us as taxpayers that talk to us? You didn't even sit down and talk to us, you crammed this down our throat, say you snatched a park, our children play football there, you tried to put portable potties out there, so we going back to our houses? No, we're not going to use portable potties. Then you want to take our park where we asked the council for air conditioning, we bought the stove, we bought the microwave, because park districts were too slow on doing anything in the park. Then all of a sudden, when you talk about putting migrants in our park, you fixed the showers, the showers ain't been fixed in about 15 to 20 years. Black people, do we matter? Austin got the highest crime rate. Do you care about our kids? You say it with your mouth, but your actions tell me something totally different. You cannot, you cannot put these people in all these police stations and expect them to do their job. We got to walk over there to get it to the station. I'm a part of the council of the 25th District, I got to go in there, go past people, why? Because they still sleeping till 12 noon, they got men's, women's sleeping together. We don't do that in shelter. As the case manager, some of the people couldn't even get in shelter with their 14-year-old child, especially if he was a boy, but we got all this stuff out here in the street, and all of a sudden, people act like we don't have no, no sympathy.
Ms. Johnson, thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. However, your time has expired. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Our next speaker is Diane Landrow. Diane Landrow. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Thank you very much, this concludes our public comment. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much, appreciate you. The next section of our meeting today is resolutions. We have two resolutions today, one celebrating Native American Heritage Month, and the second commemorates Veterans Day. Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I move for the immediate suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of these two resolutions.
Hearing no objections, so ordered in the interest of respecting people's time, we will forego reading the resolutions and go straight to remarks from the City Council. Our first resolution is celebrating Native American Heritage Month. Do any alders wish to speak to this resolution? The chair recognizes older woman Haddon.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. President. I rise to be associated with this resolution, thank you for bringing it forward. It's a pleasure every year to have our guests come and join us as we honor Native American Indigenous Peoples' Month. So thank you so much, many of you I've had the opportunity to work with and to celebrate with, and I hope to continue to do so in the future. Thank you so much for always representing Chicago with our largest population of Native American and Indigenous peoples in our kind of urban environment, and so thank you for your leadership, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any other alders that wish to speak to this resolution? The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, members of the City Council. I rise in support of this resolution as well, and I want to take a moment to recognize our very own Commissioner Matt Bide, Department of Buildings, as well as all of our distinguished guests here, who have stayed true to their heritage, which is no easy feat. You know, we have seen time and time again where, at every level of government, particularly the federal level, they have tried to stamp out Native Americans, even recently attacking the aid that we give to help educate, to help feed, and to take care of Native American children, and refusing to allow them to share and be taught their own heritage if they accept aid by the federal government. That is shameful, and thankfully, the Supreme Court and the appellate court rule against such laws, making their racist actions illegal and unconstitutional. We are here because Native Americans have persisted and do persist. They are part of the fabric that is not only Chicago, Illinois, but of these United States, and we are so thankful to your dedication to who you are, where you come from, and where you are going collectively as a people, and should always remember and remark that occasion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very much. Are there any other alders that wish to speak to this resolution? The chair recognizes older woman Manah Hoppinworth.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, I wish to be associated with it.
I would ask that the members of the public please respect the moments in which we are setting aside for speaking. The chair recognizes Manah Hoppinworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too wish to be associated with this resolution. I'm very proud of who we are as a city and as a nation, but also recognize our, our past, and so I, I wish if I could, please hear the names of those that are in the box and who you represent, is that okay?
During my, when I speak, I have all of their names.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here and for representing. Thank you, Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Alderman Rosa.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution as we honor and recognize our indigenous history, our indigenous past, but also our indigenous present, because it's so important that we fight back against the wrongful narratives that post-colonization, indigenous people disappeared. Indigenous people are a central part of this hemisphere, are a central part of the city of Chicago. Many people may not realize this, but Chicago actually has one of the largest urban native populations east of the Mississippi, and that is something that we should be so proud of, the diversity of Native American, the diversity of indigenous people here in the city of Chicago. We are sitting on indigenous land, we know that there are injustices that have been perpetrated against our Native American sisters and brothers, that we must continue to right those wrongs. We must continue to right those wrongs as a Chicago City Council and at every single level of government. But I'm so happy that we as a council can take a moment today to recognize Native American History Month. You know, in my community, we say, I didn't cross the border, the border crossed me. I am Estiso, which means I mix indigenous and European, like many people on this continent, and I'm proud of my indigenous ancestry despite the fact that my language was stolen from me, despite the fact that my history was stolen from me at the point of colonization, but I still know that the beautiful brown skin of my mother, that that beautiful melanin that she has, the way in which she is kissed by the sun, the way in which so many of my family members, you know, see that beautiful brownness in them, that that is indicative of their indigeneity. I see it in the food that we eat, you know, the other day I was watching a video on YouTube, and it was about a Cherokee, it was like a Cherokee bean pie, and that was a Mexican tamale. They took corn and they put beans in there, and I was like, that's exactly how Mexicans eat too. So I'm just really proud and happy to know that, you know, we share a common food, that we share a common ancestry, and I'm really happy that we as a council could recognize Native American History Month today, so thank you.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alder Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise to be associated with this resolution, and every Native American History Month, I struggle with how to speak in these chambers about what we are honoring. I always want to celebrate resilience, I always want to celebrate the strength of indigenous people, and yet we also need to recognize the pain of colonization. We need to recognize the incredible challenge, the invisibility of indigenous communities, particularly here in the United States. So I want to thank each of you for your leadership, I want to thank everybody in our communities that continues to work to build, to dream of a different society where we can actually integrate our indigenous communities and our indigenous practices that would definitely make this world and this society better. I am very grateful for the institutions in my community, the indigenous institutions in my community that continue to do the work to improve the lives of indigenous people, and I am looking forward to continuing to work with Chicago's indigenous communities so that we can have an Indigenous People Day, and so that we can have monuments that and so that we can have monuments that correctly honor our indigenous communities and ancestry. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise in association with this resolution. I feel good that in this moment, we have more and more understanding about not just the contributions of our indigenous populations, but of injustices that have been occurred against them. Here in this country, we've got three groups of people. We've got the indigenous population who had their land stolen from them. We've got descendants of slavery who were stolen from their land and brought here. And we've got immigrants. And because we haven't had the conversations as a community, we keep being divided in a way that those in power want to see continue. I want to thank you all for everything you continue to endure and want to show our solidarity as a government, as a city, to make sure that we recognize that Chicago was indigenous land, is indigenous land that's been taken from people who were there originally, is land that was occupied by people who came from somewhere else and moved people out of their land. And as we think about not only the challenges we face in the city, but the challenges we face globally, that we don't miss out on the lessons taught so that we can do better as we see history repeating itself all over. So, thank you. We'll continue to make sure that all your contributions are heralded and that we're bringing more education and awareness into the history about what makes our city so great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Seeing no other hands, I'd like to acknowledge the folks who are with us today. Has already been expressed, Matt Bode is with us, building commissioner. Jasmine Genuio, hope I pronounced that right. Andrew Johnson, Sidney Starr, Shelley Tucia Relye, and Marne, or Marne Smiley. I would speak to this resolution. This November, we recognize the rich history traditions and the important contributions of native peoples from past and present. Here in Chicago this month and always, we acknowledge that our great city is located on land that is and has been center for native peoples. The very foundation of our city was laid by Kirihawa of the Potawatomi, along with John Baptiste Pointe du Sabo. Our city is the native land of the Anishinaabe, or the Council of the Three Fires, and many nations. The Native American influence is felt around our city. Even our name, Chicago, comes from the Algonquin Nation. You see, the history of our city is Native American history. In our present, Chicago is home to the third-largest urban native community in the U.S. and the largest native community in the Midwest. These communities continue to add to the cultural diversity and vibrancy of our city in the realms of art, music, business, and finance, education, social services, science, and medicine. The native nations that came before us and the native peoples who enrich our city today have made Chicago what it is, the greatest city in the world. Chicago is a city that honors and celebrates our diverse communities. And that it is why we take this opportunity this November to join the nation in the recognition of Native American Heritage Month. That is also why in 2021, the city adopted a formal land acknowledgement resolution to ensure that the legacy and history of native peoples in Chicago is always remembered. Today, we reaffirm the acknowledgement and uplift National Native American Heritage Month. We will continue to remember and honor the contributions of native peoples. And furthermore, we are committed to fostering an environment that enables every single diverse community of our city to thrive. So, thank you very much. Our next resolution is honoring Veterans Day. And are there any alders that wish to speak in support of this resolution? Very good. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. With respect to our veterans, if we could have the clerk read the resolution.
Madam Clerk, please read the resolution into the record.
A resolution from his honor, the mayor, together with alderpersons Fuentes, Monai Happenworth, Gutierrez, Vasquez, Wagisback, Coleman, Mitz, Irvin Moore, Lopez, Lasbada, Lawson, Haddon, Gardner, Viegas, Nugent, Scott, O'Shea, Conway, Spazado, Martin, Robinson, Dowell, Silverstein, Ramirez, Rosa, and City Clerk Anna Valencia. Reading as follows. Whereas Armistice Day was initially celebrated in the United States on November 11, 1919, to recognize the end of World War I. And whereas Congress made Armistice Day a legal holiday on May 13, 1938, as a day dedicated to the cause of world peace. And whereas Armistice Day was renamed Veterans Day on June 1, 1954, in honor of all people who have served in the United States Armed Forces. And whereas, tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces of the United States during the past century. And whereas, hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the armed forces during the past century. And whereas, over 65,000 Chicagoans have served in the United States Armed Forces. And whereas, the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in our armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by the people of the United States. And whereas, Chicagoans and all Americans owe their freedoms and way of life to veterans who have made extraordinary personal sacrifices and many of whom suffer lifelong disabilities as a consequence of that sacrifice. And whereas, those who serve in our armed forces stand ready to endure any hardships and to be exposed to any hazards on behalf of their country and our citizens. And whereas, Chicago residents have served in conflicts around the world, including in World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Iraq, and Afghanistan. And whereas, veterans have often faced challenges in transitioning to civilian life, including a lack of adequate support from their community and recognition for their service. And whereas, Chicago is served by many notable veteran organizations like the United States Department of Veteran Affairs, the American Legion, AmVets, Disabled American Veterans, Paralyzed Veterans of America, Veterans of Foreign Wars, and Vietnam Veterans of America. And whereas, all Chicago residents and all Americans owe our veterans an undying debt of gratitude. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of Chicago, assembled this first day of November 2023, do hereby recognize November 11, 2023 as Veterans Day and honor all of the veterans in the city of Chicago and the United States of America for their bravery, dedication, and sacrifice.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes the co-sponsor commemorating Veterans Day, Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to be associated with this resolution and co-sponsor this resolution with you. As a, as a Marine, and I say that because you never stop being a Marine. There's a lot of things that we've done as Veterans Caucus. We used to have six members and now we're down to three. But you can't get rid of us. We're going to be here to make sure that we're advocating for those nearly 70,000 veterans that are here in Chicago. Those men and women that constantly and have put their lives on the line to defend this great democracy. Here in the body, we've taken steps to make sure that we're honoring those heroes. Whether it's the seat in the back with the POW MIA, where we've also required stadiums to include a seat to commemorate those that didn't make it home, that paid the ultimate sacrifice defending this great democracy. We've also instituted a veteran business enterprise program to allow veterans an opportunity to utilize procurement as an opportunity to move forward. We reinstated the Veteran Affairs Office, making sure that Chicago can be a leader in recruiting and retaining those veterans that have been deployed and wanting them to come back so we could continue to increase our, our, our population here. Couple of things that we'll be working on and we're trying to get them done before November, but obviously, we're in budget season, so it's a little tough. But look to introduce these in December. Our, our two ordinances that focus on a couple of issues. One of them on looking at identifying 10% for the affordable, for the ARO for veterans. And then also taking a look at requiring veteran preferences when we're hiring veterans. We want to make sure again that we're leading in these efforts. Fun fact, I was, I was informed by the, the mayor's office of veteran affairs today that Lieutenant Commander Conway, our colleague, is actually the first actively drilling reservist in the city, city of, the history of the city council. And so, but so while, so while he's serving the residents during the week, on the weekends, he's serving our great country. So, again, thank you for your support as we continue to move and, and not forget the over 70,000 veterans that, that call Chicago their home. We gotta, we have to remember that those men and women that have paid that ultimate sacrifice, those, those veterans that continue to advocate. The one thing about our community, the veteran community, is that we have not been as vocal as, as we should be. We need to make sure that as a community, that we're advocating for the resources and the things that are just. So, thank you for putting forward this resolution. And again, Happy Veterans Day.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazado. Would you please, I would ask the members publicly to remain. Thank you. Sergeant-at-Arms, can we please make sure?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to add my two cents to, show some respect, people, please. You couldn't show respect?
Alderman Spazado, direct your comments towards me, please.
Sorry, Mr. President. I'm just fed up with this today.
Stand, direct them towards me.
Okay.
Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado. Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Excuse me?
Mr. Mister Rosa, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Sergeant-at-Arms and CPD for
Alderman Spazado.
For the order, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Can we move a little bit? Thank you. Just want to thank everybody in the box over there. My biggest regret in life is I never joined the military. I was post-Vietnam. I'm not sure why I didn't join. I never understood what was happening, especially to the Nam guys. My father served. He was between Korea and Vietnam. Both of my grandfathers served. Two of my great uncles, one was killed in World War II. Two of them were first generation. I mean, they were, they were born in Italy and they came here and they served their country. That's how much they love this country. Also, more Italian Americans were killed in World War II than any other nationality. So, so like I say, it's a big regret. I have, you have no idea how much I respect our veterans. We need to figure out our, our homeless veterans problem in this country. I don't know what's going on. I know I feel for these people, but I'm just so grateful and thank you for all the men and women that have joined this, joined our service and protected this great country. I wish you all the best. I don't know how many of you there are still active. It looks like at least one of you has your uniform on. So, God bless you. God bless all you for what you did and what you're continuing to do. Appreciate all of you. And thank you, Mr. President, for giving me this opportunity to thank everybody and just let everybody know about my biggest regret in life is never joining the service. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I also share the exact same regret that Alderman Spazado has. I don't think a day ever goes by that I don't regret not serving my country. My father, my uncles, my grandfathers, my brothers, my nephew, my cousins, all have served. I just want to thank you for stepping up, saying that you'll go and you'll protect us and what you do for this great country and the sacrifices you've made overseas or at home and how some of those sacrifices are still with you to this day. I appreciate you. You are loved by many. Thank you for all you do. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Moore. The chair recognizes Alder Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. Want to thank everybody who's present today. So, similar to a lot of my colleagues, I come from a family of military service. I think we've got four branches covered. We don't have any National, National Guard, Alderman Conway. But from my grandfathers to my father to both my brothers, public service is something that we hold dearly in my family, and I know so many Chicagoans do. From the service that you've had to some who are still active, one of the things I would continue to encourage you to do is knowing that in, in the 49th ward and around our city, that your service hasn't ended with your military service. Your leaders in our community, your leaders in your organizations, your leaders in our companies. I hope that as, as Alderman Viegas mentioned, the diminishing Veterans Caucus and City Council, maybe some of you will consider continuing your public service and elected office as well. So, thank you for your sacrifice. Thank you for your dedication. Our country needs it. We need all types of leaders. As you can see, we're in a very fraught time. We've got a lot of crises. We've got a lot of differing opinions. But I think focusing on the things that where we can be united in our, our national dedication and our national service and in the country that we all currently call home is something that we can, that we can look to you for. So, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for continuing that and your service.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution and particularly want to thank our veterans for their service in the armed forces and, and their service to this country in particular. I am from a proud veteran family. My stepfather and my father served in the Army. I had three brothers that served in the Army and the Marines. And I had the pleasure of serving in the Army as well, but the extreme pleasure of serving as a Marine. And, and so, I want to thank our members of the armed forces, particularly those on this council as well, for their fight and their continued fight for veterans in the city of Chicago. Under the leadership of Chairman Viegas, we made some strides where we didn't have a veteran caucus at all. We've been able to make some strides as a veteran caucus. Uh, we've been able to make some strides as a veteran caucus and, and I sincerely appreciate, um, his efforts. Mr. President, we have to continue to fight for our veterans. We have nearly a thousand homeless veterans and I, I certainly appreciate, um, the real estate transfer tax because these are the things. That we don't talk about, um, how it supports those that we don't see every day. Um, and so we have to support our veterans to make sure they are housed. And, and so I certainly appreciate, uh, the passion behind the real estate transfer tax because our veterans will now have an opportunity. Um, and their families to be housed and we have to continue to look. We have to continue to look at, you know, the suffering of many of our veterans as they leave service and, and are faced with the crisis of PTSD. And do more for them, you know, to make sure that we have services available that's provided by the city, um, to address those needs. So. I, I certainly, uh, want to stand and say I give complete support to this resolution and thank all of the members of this caucus or this council. The city and in the box for their service in the armed forces. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Woman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Some of you might remember, I've shared this story before. I come from a, a family that has also served the military. My father, uh, in the Vietnam war in the army and my grandfather in the US Navy in World War Two. Which is why I'm standing before you today because that's where our citizenship story started from military service. Just get chills thinking about that. I also, um, want to acknowledge all of the contributions of Asian Americans in military service. Um, in particular, uh, one of my, one of my idols, uh, late Senator Daniel Inouye. Who farted, who fought, oh my God, I just said.
Take your time.
Thank you. He fought as part of the 442nd Infantry Division, uh, in World War Two, which was the most decorated unit in US military history. Those were Japanese Americans whose families were interned in internment camps back home. The love for this country, um, had no limits for them. We fought in wars from the Civil War through, through the, uh, through every modern day conflict. And I appreciate the sacrifices that you and your families have made because to be sure it's not just you who serve, it is your families as well. While you're serving away, they are serving at home, holding down the home front, making sure that your families are taken care of. Um, and please know that this council and myself, we see you, we appreciate your contributions and we will continue to be here. To honor the sacrifices of you and every other person who has, um, paid the ultimate sacrifice for the freedoms that we enjoy. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Um, just I'll take a little bit of privilege here because I don't know how much time she does have. But the chair would like to provide some acknowledgement to the former alder of the 17th ward, Latasha Thomas is here. Thank you for joining us today. Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a great pleasure to stand, uh, to honor, uh, those who have served in armed forces. It's truly a pleasure in my community to work day in and day out with some amazing people, uh, some of which are, are here with us today. Um, and we have, uh, the great opportunity to have. The folks who have served in our armed forces be some of the greatest givers. Individuals who organize communities to create change. In my ward, we had the manual press junior post, uh, Abundio Saragosa, the, the, the chair there. Rogelio Villa from, uh, the, the, the mission continues. I don't know if he's here, but you know, the work. That those groups do to volunteer to do community garden, to community gardens, uh, cleanups. They organize, uh, some of them organize our, our, uh, our farmer's market, if you will. Every Saturday during the summer, you know, veterans are integrated so deeply in our community. That I just wanted to stand, be associated with this resolution. Thank you all for the service you give us. Day in and day out, even after, uh, your service has ended formally with the military. So thank you so much, uh, for the opportunity to speak and I'm so proud to associate myself with all of you fine men and women here today. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alder Woman Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. And, um, I'd like to, of course, acknowledge the folks in the box and thank you for your service and also. Uh, our colleagues, I believe Alderman Telfaro is a veteran, Alderman Vegas, uh, Alderman Conway, you're still active. Thank you. Uh, this is a really special year. It marks the 70th anniversary of the armistice of the Korean War. And close to home for me in the 39th ward, I would like to give a big shout out to our Mayfair Veterans Committee. Uh, this year on Sunday, we'll be hosting our 22nd annual salute to American heroes event. And this is where we. It was originally created after nine 11 and what this committee does is it recognizes local veterans, first responders. And leaders in education to, for their service in our community and to each other and to our city and country. So. Thank you to my colleagues who have served, continue to serve. Thank you to the folks in the box and thanks to, um, my 39th ward veterans committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Good. Good morning to everyone here today for this resolution. I rise in support of this resolution and in support of our veterans. And I would also like to take a moment to acknowledge, we have guests who are in the gallery as well. Grant Jacobson of the US Army and the vet, uh, as well as from Price. And, uh, Department of Veterans Affairs, Rogelio Villa was mentioned, Kevin Kahas. Our very own Kevin Barzess of the Chicago Department of Veterans Affairs and Eden Puente and I believe Mr. Kim. The service dog. So I want to take a moment to just recognize their presence here as well. Because it is important, ladies and gentlemen, that we just don't write words on a piece of paper. This is nice, but actions are nicer. We talk about helping veterans. And we have made some progress in creating opportunities for veterans to access. City, the city's jobs, contracts and opportunities. But we know that we have a lot of work to go. And I suggest that we look in all of our own offices and see just how much we're living up to that value. Are we hiring veterans to be on our staffs? Are we hiring veterans to work for the city of Chicago specifically? Not just to hand out for a voucher, but giving them a job to continue moving forward. I've had the great honor of having two veterans work for me over the last eight and a half years. And I can tell you that there's no better hire than a United States veteran. I know that we talk about homelessness and we talk about what we can do to help end veteran homelessness in particular. How we support veterans. Well, we have a great resource here in the city of Chicago. With the Department of Veterans Affairs, the Chicago VA. Who I believe would be more than happy to work with every single one of you in this room. To connect veterans in your communities with the resources that are owed to them, like housing, like support, like medical. Like assistance in their homes for caregiving, like education, like all of the other things that are available to every veteran. That they simply don't know where to go. I know that they'd be willing to come because they've been coming to my office for nearly three months now. They set up shop and by word of mouth from our own veterans, the veterans come in. And they have one-on-ones and they get to talk. With a human being about what their needs are and how the VA can help them with what is owed for their service. Forgive me with my back to you because I'm. That is a wonderful opportunity that is open to you all. The challenge is how many of you are going to open your doors to them? I would love to see one year hence, all 50 of us stand up and say, we opened our doors. To the veterans affairs so that veterans could come in freely and leave with more than they walked in with. Last week, I had a gentleman come to my office who was in his late sixties. A veteran decades removed from service, a veteran who had health issues, a veteran who had housing issues. And a veteran up until last week had never been connected with the VA. Imagine how much better his life would have been if we had connected him decades earlier with what was owed to him for his service. That is what Veterans Day needs to mean for each and every one of us here. Opening your doors and helping those who need the help with what is available to them right now. The federal government commits hundreds of millions of dollars to helping its veterans, but yet still struggles to connect them. I think it's about 40% connectivity veterans to the VA. We can be a part of raising those numbers, of connecting those services and helping those that we just said today. Have sacrificed so much for all of us. What sacrifices it to us to open a door and give space. To the VA to help them, their families and everyone that they know. So, Mr. President. I challenge. The 49 here. And the three citywides, including yourself. To make this the year where we open the doors to the veterans community in the city of Chicago. Where we, where we truly say we are honored for your service, honored by your service. And humbly ask for you to come into our offices to get the services that you are owed for what you've given up for this country. The greatest country in the world, which so many have chosen not to voluntarily enter into. But you did. And we thank you and we commit ourselves to being there for you and your families and for all of those. Who aren't here with us and all of those who still don't know how to get the help or the resources that are owed to them. That should be our challenge. That is how we make this a 50-member veterans caucus. Because they are in every community. They are in Englewood. They are in Austin. They are in Rogers Park. They are in Clearing. No community is without veterans. The question is now, how do we get those services to every community? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for the challenge. For a moment there, I thought you were going to challenge us to a duel. So, thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Knudsen.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise to associate with this resolution and also be added as a co-sponsor. Um, I want to echo many things that Alderman Lopez just said and fellow Aldermen have said today and also. Just sign on as a partner with the legislation that Chairman Vegas mentioned and thank the, thank Chairman Vegas, Talia Farrow, Conway for their services as well. A lot of us have veteran stories that we should be really proud and grateful of. My two grandparents met on, uh, Navy Pier. My grandma was serving as a wave. In the US Navy, women accepted for volunteer emergency service. And my grandpa was serving in the Navy long-term in subs at the time. Um, how this event that they met, it was a USO event, how it's been described to me is a little bit like a mixer before. You know, Tinder or any dating app was a thing. They'd get, uh, some military service members together and see if they clicked. That event changed the trajectory of my family and both of their service coming together. Really helped different family members go to school. It ingrained in us just hard work and many of the values that you all work for every single day. So I want to say again, just use our offices as resources. We all need to do a better job advertising our offices, offices. As, as safe spaces for, um, veterans of all kinds to come in, to be connected to additional resources, to see how we can help. And again, I just want to thank you all for your sacrifice, for, for being here and we're all going to continue thanking by, by working hard for you.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Chico.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I too stand in support of this resolution. Thank you to the men and women in the box and all across this country. For the work and the work they will continue to do. Thank you. Mr. President, I represent the 10th ward and I have hardly the Guadalupe, which I brought up before. In Vietnam, they lost the most young men that any other parish in the country, 12. And I'm so happy to see my ward come together to support them. At that time and, and now, and I am also proud to share with the council that the mural we have. Across the street from our lady Guadalupe, we are working to restore, to give more pride to the community. That benefited from these young men in Vietnam. So thank you. Thank you for all you do. Um, and I stand in support.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I rise as well to be associated with this resolution. I wanted to thank you, not just those in the box, but everyone that's, that's served. We're in incredibly challenging times. I think you all who've been here have seen some of us in this council debate. We've seen people from the box raise their voices as well. It becomes a bit raucous. It becomes a bit contentious. We have a space and opportunity to have these conversations, whether we agree or not, in large part to the sacrifices made by those who have served. Right? There are other places in the world where you cannot have these debates publicly. You cannot have this disagreement. You cannot come to some sort of compromise where it's always conflict. But what you all have done with sacrifice. Has allowed us to have that space here to hopefully get to a better, more promising future. And I want to thank you for that. Many of you all who are here are, are survivors who have memories and experiences that we could never imagine. That you carry with you as you come back from serving. And although we take one day to recognize it, it's clearly not enough. I want to thank, um, Alderman Lopez. For his comments and his challenge. I think we should find a day as this council or sometime is specifically set aside, not just to take a day off. But to have a day on and make sure the veterans know to come to our offices to be connected with any services that they need. When we think about folks who are out there. Yesterday was particularly challenging for me, walking outside of, just walking to city hall and seeing the snow start to hit. And understanding we have people out here that are overnight sleeping. Some, many who are veterans that need the services, that need housing, that need mental health support systems and aren't receiving them. So although it looks really nice to watch the snow first fall, before it hits the ground, you feel the sorrow for the folks that are out there on the street. And so I want to make sure we do more. I'm glad that this council is moving forward. With something like bring Chicago home so that there are funding specifically to create the kind of housing, to make sure people aren't homeless out there. That they get the support systems that are necessary because it's a real tragedy and a disgrace and a shame in this country. That the folks who fight so hard to make sure we have those freedoms are on any level on the streets. So I do want to make sure that we make that commitment. I want to thank those, uh, members of our council who are veterans. Uh, Alderman Vegas, Alderman Telfaro, Alderman Conway, and ask that you all challenge us daily legislatively to make sure we focus on how we can add those support systems. And, and just overall globally, I just hope we all could contribute to having a world where we don't have to have anybody serve for anything because there isn't need to. So. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes. Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I definitely, um. Stand in support of this resolution as I added my name to it at the beginning. And first to my colleagues and this council, I want to let you all know the veterans, if I don't tell you enough, I appreciate you. I constantly repeat this story, um, whether it's Memorial Day or, um, Veterans Day. My dad served in the Vietnam war. And from when I was a child, it was almost like, um, you had to do it and if, and if you didn't, you'd get knocked upside your head. Anytime you see a veteran. Think of veteran. And I didn't really get the full meaning of that until I got a, a little older. And so it's not just you just walking past and just saying it haphazardly. It's knowing that someone is standing on that wall for you or someone stood on that wall for you. Because you know that one thing we know and as we see as things that happen throughout the world, freedom isn't free. And so, um, somebody's paying a price, whether with their life, with, with, have given the ultimate sacrifice. Or with their time away from their families or giving up themselves. And for that I am grateful for. We can say thank you, but the best thank you you can give is, um, consistently doing things, not just one day. That's why I'm excited. That when I first became alderman and I sat down at our, um, veterans building and I, I sat and asked them what was important to them. The first thing that they said is that we don't feel appreciated. We don't feel like we are part of the, um, parade and everything that they do downtown. So we want our own parade. And I started the first South Side Memorial Day Parade that we have every year going into our ninth year. Coming up in May. Also making sure that consistently around the, um, year. But also especially on Veterans Day, not only do we do bring lunch, but we are. but we provide resources to them. And so it's not just saying thank you, it's showing it with the action and everything. And one thing I'm just so excited about, I am seeing more women organizations pop up. Two have come to mind. Can't call the names of them, but two that I'm thinking of, one wear purple and I think another one pink, if I could remember the colors. And so these organizations are doing great work and they are constantly reaching out and we're here always to support. So, thank you all so much. Stay encouraged and the seventeenth ward office is always open. If no one else is taking and listening to you, we will be there. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Yancy.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. I too am honored to rise in support of this ordinance. Today I think about Milton Olive, who on November seventh, we'd be celebrating his seventy-seventh birthday, who gave his life in the ultimate act of valor to save soldiers in Vietnam. Thank you to all of you who served who are in the box, those in this body who have served and those who have served in this body and have served. I'm a nephew of three uncles who were Marines who served in Vietnam and came home with horrible scars, both inside and out. Also had a number of brothers, three brothers and several cousins who served as both soldiers and sailors during times of war and peace. You know, veterans often make the most extreme sacrifices to protect our democracy and our way of life, but often come home to fight for the bare minimum of resources that they deserve for their bravery and their valor. And so today, you know, I give everything I can in support of veterans in this city and in this country who are doing things that many of us wouldn't even fathom to do. And so with that, I offer thanks and stand in support of this resolution.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes older woman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to support this resolution. Today I stand as a proud family member. The baby of the group is here. The siblings is here who served in the Army, but we have brothers who have served in the Marines and in the which one? Navy. And not to mention our cousin who is in the Air Force. But our uncle kind of set the tone for us. He served and gave what is the ultimate thing that you can do, give your life for your country, to show us that it's okay to be a leader. He actually was my, in fact, my parents would have been awarded the medal on his behalf because he actually pushed several members out of the way of the tank and the tank then hit him and ran over him, but he saved the lives of multiple people that were in training that day. So today I am grateful for people who serve in our place, who give their life or put their life on the line for us. So today, Mr. President, I stand here and support it. I am appreciative and not to be redundant, but thank everybody for their service.
Thank you very much. Before we go to our close, which will be Alderman Conway, the last person that I have on the list is Fuentes. Are there any others that wish to speak before Alderman Conway closes? Okay, we will add Lasbada and then Alderman Conway will close. The chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in support of this resolution. I have the great honor to represent the twenty-sixth ward, which also represents veterans of the sixty-fifth Infantry Regiments, also known as the Borinca Neers and All Latino Regiment that served. And before becoming all the person, as a policy advocate and as the co-chair of the Puerto Rican Agenda, I also fought really hard to get funding and to build the sixty-fifth Infantry Affordable Housing that is also in the twenty-sixth ward. When we acknowledge our veterans and when we celebrate Veterans Day, it's nice to elevate our veterans and to acknowledge those have served and to remember those who are no longer with us, but it's also a reminder of the work that's ahead of us, that we must continue to dignify, affirm, humanize and elevate the people that continue to sacrifice, not just their own lives, but their families. We know when people serve, the entire family does. Children grapple with that absence. Spouses worry every day. Parents hope that their children come back home. And so while we are an acknowledgement of everyone that serves, we also know that we have to provide the wraparound supports and build the infrastructure to serve the entire family. Today, I want to thank everyone in the box for their sacrifice, not just of your own lives, but for time with family, parents, children, nieces and nephews, because you found it to be a privilege and an honor to serve this country. I also want to thank my ward superintendent, Hugo Samoaoya Junior, who is also still active. I want to thank an unhoused resident in the twenty-sixth ward who currently lives in a tent in Humboldt Park, Alan, who comes to my office and reminds me every day of the work that we have to do, of how we have to prioritize housing, mental health care, and that that is a fight that we have to fight every day. And that an ordinance like Bring Chicago Home is one step in the right direction to housing our residents, to housing every unhoused neighbor across the city of Chicago. And it is work that we have to be brave enough to fight every day. We must come to council with a moral obligation to do that work, the way you all have fought in combat. The bravery that you've shown this country is a bravery that we all must take and that we all must show the city of Chicago. And so I want to thank you for being here today, for those who have served, for those who are still active. And I want every family member of veterans and active members across the city of Chicago to know that we too stand with you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. One more time, are there any others that wish to speak? Okay, so we will have Alderman Lasbada and then Alderman Conway will close. The chair recognizes Alderman Lasbada.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Very proud to stand in support of this resolution. I think of my father who served. I think of my father-in-law who served. I think about the comfort and freedom that I experienced, that my daughter experiences, that is born on the backs of the sacrifices of so many. Beyond that, what can I say more eloquently or briefly than what Alderman Talia Farrow already said? If it is true, and we know that it is, that veterans are disproportionately impacted by homelessness, by mental health crises and trauma, it is our mandate to act on this. I, I love what the words on this sheet of paper represent what they mean. But if it doesn't go beyond this, this is literally and figuratively a very cheap and flimsy form of solidarity with you. I'm glad for what we're voting for today. I'm excited for what we will accomplish through the Bring Chicago Home resolution. If we truly mean that we support the mental health and trauma needs of our veterans, this is an exciting budget to have an opportunity to vote for, for the city. And it helps me believe that this is more than just a rhetorical and performative moment to have opportunities to put our money where our mouth is on behalf of yourselves and those who served along with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And to close, the chair recognizes our active member, Alderman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I obviously rise in support of this resolution and I was shocked when the Department of Veterans Affairs informed me that I was the first actively drilling reservist in the history of city council. You don't think that a white Catholic guy in Chicago City Council could be the first anything, but here we are. I hesitate to tell this story, but I think it's, because I don't talk about it publicly. But about six years ago, almost to the day, it was my first day in Afghanistan and I was in transient housing and I woke up, I had waited in the middle of the night and I had to, I saw about a hundred yards across the field, the place you'd get a cup of coffee. And they tell you, walk out to the street, which weirdly enough at Bagram Airfield, it's called Disney Drive. I don't know why that is. Probably not called that today. You're supposed to walk out to Disney Drive, walk down the road and then come back to the green bean coffee area. I instead, in a terrible, almost life-ending decision in fact, said, I know this airfield better than anybody. I've been watching with a drone for a long time. I know where the Taliban tries to shoot things down. I'm just going to cut along the fence line. So I get about thirty yards across this hundred-yard field and all of a sudden, the IDF alarm, the indirect fire, the mortar alarm essentially, which sounds exactly like the iPhone ring. It starts going incoming, incoming, incoming. And I remember I hit the deck and it was scary. And and I looked up and I saw about fifty yards away, there was an old Soviet bunker. And I started sort of trying to walk like, you know, crawl like this. And I wasn't getting very far, very fast. And I got up and I started, started, started crouch running into the bunker and fortunately made it. And fortunately, I know, and I know that is nothing compared to what many of our veterans did, went and have gone through. I went through that one time. I can assure you that one time is all you need. But we have many, many veterans out there who went through that repeatedly, dozens of times and closer calls than I had. And I think it's that, that repeated trauma that is the reason that we lose twenty-two veterans a day to suicide. And you know, also a lot of, a lot of traumatic shared experience and many of us veterans being put in an environment where we all come from different backgrounds and different values. We have different bosses. And the fact that we have been through that, that situation where failure to complete the mission is not an option. And I think that's why veterans share such a, such a strong bond, even if they didn't serve together. You know, we look, when we look at the US Congress today, back in the sixties, seventies and eighties, you know, there was about seventy percent veterans in Congress. And back then you had a lot less partisanship, a lot more bills got passed. Today, the number of veterans in Congress is less than twenty percent and obviously see much more partisanship and much less bills getting passed. Right? You're seeing a lot of failure to complete the mission. And fortunately, we all get along better here in this chamber. So I, I mean, I'd just like to say that I am proud to be a member of the Veterans Caucus with Chairman Viegas and Chairman Talia Farrow. I'd also like to acknowledge our Sergeant-at-Arms, Alvin Starks, who's a Navy veteran, excuse me, Army veteran as well. And and I want to, I want to thank all of, all my fellow veterans in the box today for, for representing all of us today and thank all of you for your, for your kind remarks and, and Mr., Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank you for your support of the Department of Veterans Affairs in this city. And I thank you all for your support of veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we'd like to acknowledge the members who are with us today. Thomas Losada, Frank Gutierrez, Major Karen Hernandez, Victor Sarmiento, CJ Cissat, Charles Henderson, DeMarique Palasek, Jeremy Norris, James Terry Blue Senior, Lourdes Fernando, Denise Montoya, Major Judith Bell, Grant Jacobson. Would also like to speak to this resolution. On Veterans Day, we come together as a nation to thank and honor and remember those who have served our country in every branch of the armed forces. During times of war and times of peace, the brave men and women of the armed forces have shown extraordinary dedication and loyalty to our nation. They make enormous sacrifices and contributions to maintain our freedom and defend our way of life. For that, every November eleventh, we recognize all veterans and salute them for their exemplary service. In Chicago, we especially acknowledge the over sixty-five thousand Chicagoans who have served in the United States Armed Forces. And throughout our history, brave men and women from our city have served with honor and distinction in conflicts around the world, from the trenches of World War I to the deserts in Iraq and Afghanistan. The courage displayed by Chicago's veterans and the resilience they have demonstrated cannot be overstated. Truly honor our veterans. We not only recognize Veterans Day, but we must pledge to do right by our veteran community. Brothers and sisters from the armed forces oftentimes come home and struggle to transition to civilian life. They face hurdles both visible and invisible. We must demonstrate our immense gratitude by extending support and embracing our veteran community. Let's also make sure that we work in partnership with our notable veteran organizations and let us ensure that the Chicagoans who serve are welcomed back into our city and society with open arms and are and able to use their skills and experiences to embark upon the next chapter of their life. It is the least we can do as a city to thank our veterans, to all of our veterans and especially those from Chicago. You have our deep appreciation, respect and gratitude today and every day. Thank you for your remarkable contributions. And with that, I would respectfully ask Alderman Mitchell, can we get a motion to pass both of these resolutions?
Mr. President, I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Resolutions for both Veterans Day as well as as well as the Native American Heritage Month, both of those have passed. Thank you very much. As those gather for the photo, I understand that there are a few individuals who are part of the, the work that we do in the city who are also veterans. I would ask for leave for individuals to be able to join us on the floor to take the picture. Do I have leave from this body? All right, leave is granted. Thank you very much. Alderman Mitchell?
Mr. President, I move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Communications.
Patients from his honor, the mayor to the honorable, the city council, city of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Housing, I transmit her with an ordinance authorizing issuance of financial assistance for the United Yard's one A Affordable Housing Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreement. Chicago Board of Education provide tip funds for improvements at Kenwood Academy High School. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Chicago Board of Education, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the provision of fee waivers to Chicago Board of Education. Favorite consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing an ordinance authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement with Rebuild, Rebuild Foundation NFP to provide neighborhood opportunity funds for the Saint Lawrence Arts Incubator Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinances or ordinances authorizing the budgets and execution of service agreements with service providers for various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of this ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Family and Sports Services, I transmit here with an ordinance reauthorizing the flexible housing pool program. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for the Lakeview Landing Affordable Housing Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Assets, Information and Services, I transmit here with ordinance authorizing the execution of amended lease agreement with North LaSalle Financial Associates LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Assets, Information and Services, I transmit here nor herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of an easement agreement with thirty-three oh five Longdale Development LLC. Your favorable consideration, consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Department of Business Affairs and Civil Protection, together with Alderman Ramirez Rosa, Burnett and Martin, I transmit here in ordinance amending section seventeen dash five dash zero two zero seven Municipal Code regarding outdoor patio dining. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Department of Planning and Development, together with Alderman Ramirez Rosa and LaSpada, I transmit here with ordinance adding seventeen dash thirteen dash zero three zero three dash D Municipal Code regarding type one applications. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Sierra Boatwright as Commissioner of Planning and Development, effective on November twentieth, twenty twenty-three. If passage occurs on before that date, otherwise effective upon passage. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I appointed Sierra Boatwright as a member of the Community Development Commission for term beginning on November twentieth, twenty twenty-three. If passage occurs on or before date, otherwise beginning upon the date of passage and expiring February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-seven to complete the unexpired term of Maurice D. Cox, who has resigned, your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Advisory Council on Women. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Health and Human Relations. I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council, the following documents filed in my office. Determination Certificate City Comptroller concerning second lien water revenue bond series twenty-two-three C and refunding series twenty-two-three fee. I City Clerk Valencia also informed the City Council that all those matters were considered by the City Council's special meeting held on October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers or published in pamphlet form on November first, twenty twenty-three by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copy of the journal proceedings of City Council, City, Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also informed the City Council that all those matters were considered by the City Council, the regular meeting held on October eleventh, twenty twenty-three to require the state statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or one or more newspapers or published in pamphlet form on November first, twenty twenty-three by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings of the City Council, City, Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also informed the City Council that a resolution related actions which were considered by the City Council, the special meeting held on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, which required by statute to be published in pamph, book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers or published in pamphlet form on November first, twenty twenty-three by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings of the City Council, City, Chicago. I City Clerk Anna Valencia also informed the City Council that all those matters were considered by the City Council, the regular meeting held on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, which required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or one or more newspapers or published in pamphlet form or November first, twenty twenty-three by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings of the City Council, City, Chicago. I City Clerk also informed the City Council, the following ordinance were passed by the City Council on October fourth, twenty twenty-two for requests to be published in special pamphlet forms or published in special form on November first, twenty twenty-three. In position of, imposition of tax levy approval of the year twenty-two-four budget, execution of service provider agreement of special service number number one dash twenty sixteen. Imposition of a tax levy approval of the year twenty-two-four budget and execution of service provider agreement, agreement for special area, service area number twenty. Imposition of tax levy approval of the year twenty-two-four budget, execution of service provider agreement for special service area number twenty-one dash twenty sixteen. In position, imposition of tax levy approval of the year twenty-two-four budget, execution of service provider agreement for special service area number fifty-five. Imposition of a tax levy approval of the year twenty-two-four budget amendment of the year twenty-two-three service provider agreement, no execution of a service provider agreement for special service number area number seventy-five, imposition of a tax levy approval of the year twenty-two-four budget, execution of service provider agreement on special service area number seventy-nine. I City Clerk Valencia also transmits here with the following miscellaneous communications or reports requiring City Council action. Zoning classifications of particular areas referred to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, claims against the City of Chicago, which referred to Committee on Finance. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications to the mayor and other city officers.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Committee reports, Chair recognizes the Finance Chair Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, members of the City Council, reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which held a committee meeting on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. The following items received a due pass recommendation from the committee. Item number one is an ordinance concerning an amendment for the Imani Village Senior Residence Development at ninety-six twenty-one South Cottage Grove Avenue that revises the HUD loan term and interest rate. This project is located in the eighth ward. Mr. President, unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move for passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Seeing no hands, uh, members, please use the e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The roll call is now open, or sorry, the voting is now open, the voting is now open. Please use your e-device if you need help and make sure to hit refresh as well. I will now call for anyone for a voice vote if you had not used your e-device. Alderman Curtis.
Present.
Alderman Curtis is a, is a, a yes.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is a, is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor. Alderwoman Taylor. I'll come back to you. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is a yes. Alderwoman Silverstein.
Yes.
Alderwoman Silverstein is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor, just coming back to you if you're there. Okay. Alderwoman Taylor not present at the moment. All right, the voting is now closed.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. There are forty-nine yeas, zero nays. This matter is passed. Alderman Mitchell?
Mr. President, I move to reconsider vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. This motion fails. Very much. Thank you. Please continue. Chair Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number two is an ordinance concerning the execution of an owner strip transfer agreement to East Lake Darul LLC regarding Darul Aman Senior Apartments at forty-eight fourteen through forty-eight twenty North Kedzie Avenue in the thirty-third ward. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Item number three is an ordinance concerning the issuance of financial assistance to Austin United Alliance LP for the Austin United Alliance Residential Project at fifty-two oh six through fifty-two twenty-four West Chicago Avenue in the thirty-seventh ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Item number four is an ordinance concerning the execution of a revised redevelopment agreement with Celadon Construction Corporation entities, Blackwood Development Partners LLC and United Yards one B entities for the property at forty-seven hundred South Ashland Avenue and forty-seven oh seven South Marshville Avenue in the twentieth ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number five is an ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for the provision of tax increment financing funds for the improvements at Clemente Community Academy High School at eleven forty-seven Northwestern Avenue in the first ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number six is the ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for the provision of tax increment financing funds for improvements at Von Steuben Metropolitan Science High School at fifty thirty-nine North Kimball Avenue in the thirty-ninth ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number seven is an ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for the provision of tax increment financing funds for improvements at Molleton Elementary School at forty-four fifteen South Dart, South King Drive in the amount of two point nine million in the third ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number eight is an ordinance concerning the Third Amendment to the Twenty-Fourth and Michigan Tax Increment Finance Program Redevelopment Plan and Project in the third, fourth and eleventh wards. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number nine is an ordinance concerning the Second Amendment to the Hundred and Eleventh and Kedzie Avenue Business District Redevelopment Plan and Project in the nineteenth ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number ten is an ordinance concerning the Second Amendment to the Clark Montrose Tax Increment Finance Redevelopment Plan and Project in the fortieth, forty-sixth and forty-seventh wards. Alderman Matt Martin of the forty-seventh ward has invoked Rule Fourteen during the committee meeting.
Chair recognizes Alderman Martin.
Thank you. Um, my, uh, wife works for a fundraising consulting firm that several years ago did work on behalf of Black Ensemble Theater, which was one of a number of entities that's been advocating for the extension of that TIF that work concluded over a year ago. She herself never worked on that project, but out of an abundance of caution, I'll be invoking Rule Fourteen for this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move passage of this item by the same motion with the exception of Alderman Martin, who recuses himself from this vote.
Very well. No other objection, no objections, no hands, so ordered.
Item number eleven is an ordinance concerning the Second Amendment to the Galewood Armitage Industrial Tax Increment Finance Program Redevelopment Plan and Project in the twenty-ninth, thirty-sixth and thirty-seventh wards. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number twelve is an ordinance concerning the Fourth Amendment to the Woodlawn Tax Increment Finance Redevelopment Plan and Project in the fifth and twentieth wards. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items number thirteen and fourteen consist of orders of authorization for the payment of various small claims against the City of Chicago and denial of payments of various small claims against the City of Chicago. If there are no objections, I move that these items be placed for passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item fifteen is an order authorizing two applications for the City of Chicago Charitable Solicitation Tag Day permits for the Ronald McDonald House Charities of Chicagoland and Northwest Indiana and the Planned Parenthood Federation of America, Inc. If there are no objections, I move that these items be placed in the omnibus.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item sixteen is the report of cases in which verdicts, judgments or settlements were entered into for the month of September twenty twenty-three. This will be placed on file with the clerk. Item number seventeen.
So moved.
Thank you. Item number seventeen A is an order authorizing the Corp Counsel to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Brent G. Hampton, Jr. as administrator of the estate of Michelle Ewing, deceased, and to hang Don, Donika Volker as mother and next friend of Eliana Hampton Volker versus the City of Chicago cited as twenty nineteen L. twenty-eight seventy-nine in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider with the exception of Alderman Quinn, who wishes to be recorded as voting no.
Here, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report from the Committee on Finance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next committee is Committee on Aviation. The Chair recognizes Chairman O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Aviation, which held a meeting on Monday, October the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Committee had two items recommended for passage. Item number one, a substitute ordinance, an extension and amendment of concessionaire COVID-nineteen Economic Relief Agreement at Chicago's O'Hare International Airport and Midway International Airport. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and an, an associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two, an ordinance, the Second Amendment to License Agreement with Chicago Concourse Development Group for Wireless Communication Access System and Services at Chicago O'Hare International Airport and Midway International Airports. I make the same motion. If there is no objection, Mr. President.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Taylor, I believe who wishes to be added to the roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
As a yes, I would imagine.
Yes, Mr. President.
Please add Alderwoman Taylor as a yes. Committee on, Committee on, on Rules, Committee on Rules. Uh, the Chair recognizes Chairwoman Harris.
Reporting for your Committee and Committee on Rules, which met on Tuesday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three at twelve thirty and again on this morning at ten a.m. and concluded earlier this morning, the committee makes the following recommendations in a series of reports. The committee recommends approval of item one, a correction of the City Council Journal of Proceedings of September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, ordinance twenty, twenty-three, zero, 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 five, four, four, three. A correction of the City Council Journal of Proceedings for September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. I move approval of this recommendation by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. The committee recommends that item two be re-referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules, R. two, zero, two, three, zero, 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 four, two, two, four, submission of a public question by referendum to the Chicago voters at March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four election proposing to the, uh, all voters to determine if Chicago should continue to keep its designation as the sanctuary city of Chicago. Uh, two colleagues have decided to defer and publish this. Alderman, uh, Vasquez and Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Chair, thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez. The item will be deferred. You don't wish to speak? You don't wish to speak. The item will be deferred. Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Mr. President, how do you defer and publish something that's not being reported out?
Chairwoman has just reported out and then it was deferred.
That it's being re-referved, it's not being reported out, it's being re-referved.
That's a report.
That's, that's not a report, Mr. Chairman. That is a re-referral, that is not a reporting out of.
Once something is referred out and once something is brought to the body, it's a report. Thank you. Is there anything else, Alderman?
Could I speak to the issue, Mr. President?
Sure may. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just want to, um, speak to this re-referral. Uh, first, Mr. President, I've never in my twenty-four year, twenty-four and a half years seen a report re, that was re-refered from itself. There was a committee report that was sent to rules. Rules Committee reported it out and reported it back to themselves. I've never seen where you send something to yourself in committee. That's just, I've never seen it. And so I understand that, you know, twenty-six votes, you can rule and do whatever you want. If you got twenty-six votes, I get that and I understand it. But I just believe that this is a very, very important subject here in the city of Chicago, that the people, there was a poll done and seventy-seven percent of the people of the city of Chicago have stated that they would like to have a voice on whether or not we want to remain a sanctuary city. Now, I understand there's a lot of controversy behind it, but let me just say this to my colleagues. There's nothing binding about this referendum. It is just a question proposed to the people that do they want to continue to spend thirty, forty million dollars a month on migrants when our communities are crumbling every single day? We need police, we need better schools, we need better streets, we need better jobs, we need all kind of things in our community, and we're just taking money and taking it out back and burning it. We're not seeing any fruits of the labor of all the money that's being spent on migrants, ladies and gentlemen. Now, I believe we need to take care of the people. I get that, but there's a limit to everything. You have Denver sending their migrants to Chicago. You have New York sending their migrants to Chicago, and we're saying just keep them coming. Keep them coming, we got endless, you know, resources. We have to draw the line unless, all I'm saying is if the people say we want to continue down this road, so be it. But don't shut the people out from having a voice, whether or not they want to continue down this road. This is an important issue. And so I understand it's being re-refered to the re-refered to the refers back to itself. I get it. But ladies and gentlemen, we have a special city council meeting tomorrow. There's going to be one remaining spot on the ballot that needs to be filled. Come, don't shut the people out. Let the people have a voice. Let the people have a voice whether or not they want to continue down this road or not. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Harris.
He recommends that item three be re-refered to the Committee on Environment and Protection and Energy, R. three, zero, two, three, zero, zero, four, five, seven, seven. A resolution calling for hearings of the proposed rate hikes by People's Gas. The committee recommends that this item be re-refered to Committee on Environment, Environmental Protection and Energy. I move approval of this recommendation by the same motion if there's no objections.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you. The committee recommends that item four through fourteen be re-refered to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Item eight, two, zero, two, three, dash, zero, zero, five, zero, two, three. A recommendation of Sarah Miranda to the Advisory Council of New Asians. Item five, eight, two, zero, two, three, zero, zero, four, nine, six, three. A reappointment of Butch Trusty to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ plus issues. Item six, eight, two, zero, two, three, zero, zero, four, nine, six, four. A reappointment of Mariah Arnold to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ plus issues. Item seven, uh, eight, two, zero, two, three, zero, zero, four, nine, six, eight. A reappointment of Jim Shuhung to Advisory Council on LGBTQ plus issues. Item eight, eight, two, zero, two, three, zero, zero, four, nine, seven, three, three. A recommendation of Cornelius Lee to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ plus issues. Item nine, eight, two, zero, two, three, zero, zero, four, nine, seven, four. Reappointment of Pamela Lightsey to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ plus issues. Item ten, uh, recommendation, item ten, um, a reappointment, I'm sorry, of eight, two, zero, two, three, zero, zero, four, nine, seven, five, of Donald M. Bell to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ plus issues. Item eleven, eight, two, zero, two, three, zero, zero, four, nine. A zero, reappointment of Stephanie Clark to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ issues. Item twelve, eight, two, zero, two, three, zero, zero, four, nine. A two, a reappointment of Vic Winter to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ issues. Item thirteen, eight, two, zero, two, three, zero, zero, four, nine. A three, a reappointment of Siobhan Shea to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ plus issues. Item fourteen, an appoint, um, eight, two, zero, two, three, zero, zero, one, nine, eight, four, uh, appointment of Christian N. Kazar to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ plus issues. I move approval of the recommendations that items fourteen, four through fourteen be re-refered to the Committee on Health and Human Relations by the same motion if there's no objections.
Hearing none, so ordered.
The committee recommends that item fifteen be re-refor, be re-refered to the Joint Committee on Health and Human Relations Committee on Education, Child Development, and the Committee on Workforce Development with a simultaneous delegation by Workforce Committee to its Youth Employment Subcommittee. Item fifteen, zero, two, zero, two, three, zero, zero, four, two, one, six. An amendment of the municipal code by adding the Peacebook Ordinance establishing neighborhood and citywide peace commissions to implement initiatives for peacekeeping activities. I move approval of this, of the recommendation that item fifteen be re-refor, referred to the Joint Committee on Health and Human Relations Committee on Education and Child Development and the Committee on Workforce Development with a simultaneous deleg, delegation by Workforce Committee to its Youth Employment Subcommittee.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. The committee recommends the re-referral to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate, um, ordinance, um, zero, two, zero, two, three, zero, zero, four, two, two, five. An ordinance implementing a thirty-day advance notice to all the persons when any public or private property in a ward will be designated as a temporary residential shelter for more than twelve individuals. I move approval of this recommendation and items, item sixteen be re-refered to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
The committee recommends approval of item seventeen, uh, approval of the public question for submission by, uh, referendum to the voters for this, uh, for certain new, uh, Chicago real estate transfer rates to combat homelessness with services, which services shelters. Uh, R. two, zero, two, three, zero, zero, four, one, six, six. A, approval of the public question submission by recommendation to the Chicago voters for the certain new Americans' real estate transfer rates to combat homelessness with service shelters. Alderman, the sponsors. Let me get this one right. Wish to make a recommendation to, uh, DNP item Alderman Ramirez Rosa, Alderman Haddon, and Alderman Martin, which to DNP this item.
Very well.
Item eighteen was held.
So ordered.
Thank you. Item eighteen was held. The committee recommends approval of item nineteen, submission of the public question by referendum to Chicago voters that.
Did she, um, excuse me, just for a second. Um, you, the, the number seventeen, uh, did you move for the passage?
No, I moved for.
Deferred, right, defer and publish, right? And eighteen is held, right? And our nineteen, yes, yep, very good.
Okay, so the committee recommends approval of item nineteen, the submission of the public question by a referendum to Chicago voters on, um, on, at the March nineteenth election proposing to allow voters to determine if Chicago shall create flooding mitigation and response plan. This item will be, item number R. two, zero, two, three, zero, zero, five, one, zero, nine will also be DNP'd by the sponsor, Alderman Haddon and Alderman Mitts.
So moved, thank you very much.
That concludes my report.
The chair recognizes, thank you, the chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
I think, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, during the, the chairperson's committee report, I was hoping to be recognized before, uh, item nineteen was deferred and published. Uh, I understand that was going to happen, but just want to speak to it briefly.
Sure.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. You know, it's people that have been here for a while know that it's not often, uh, Alderman Anthony Beal and I agree. Uh, we've been disagreeing for sixteen years or more. Um, but I just want to refresh people's memory on what we're doing with these ballot questions. Um, and certainly the real estate transfer tax is a serious question, um, that the voters will need to answer. Um, but I got to tell you, crowding out a referendum on our sanctuary city status and denying Chicago voters the right to opine on this issue, an issue that was settled many, many years ago, probably before a lot of folks owned their homes here, um, that are voting today. Um, we should hear from the people of Chicago. And I think that, um, frankly, uh, using, um, a ballot question asking whether or not Chicago shall create a flooding mitigation plan, who's going to vote against that? I mean, why aren't we doing that already, Mr. President? The Chicago should already have a flooding mitigation plan. Um, it just seems a shame that we're employing tactics that date back to the old machine days of daily to push off questions that we believe, I believe the people of Chicago should be asked and allowed to answer. That's who we all work for here. And it's been a long time since the people of Chicago have been asked their opinion on this issue. And if this, this question were asked and the people were to say we want to retain our sanctuary city status, well, then we know that. I suspect there's a different sentiment out there. And look, I, I am sympathetic to the migrant population coming here too. I want them to be safe. I want the neighborhoods that they're housed in to be safe. Uh, we also have finite resources available to us as a city. And we're not getting the kind of support that we need from the federal government. Uh, we need that desperately. But to ask taxpayers to continue to, 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 to shoulder this burden when we have so many other needs in the city of Chicago right now that we've heard from our constituents about, um, is, 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 I think, um, a question that needs to be answered by, by the general public. And so, um, I understand that this item's been deferred and published. I just hope my colleagues recognize that this is a hot button issue that all of our constituents are talking about. People have varying opinions on it. But let's hear them out. You know, democracy with a small d. Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The, the chair recognizes Alderman Sigcho Lopez. This is not for your committee report, is that correct? Thank you, Alderman Sigcho Lopez.
Um, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, I've been patiently hearing some of the opinions expressed yesterday. And it is clear that we continue to pander for votes in a time where we need to act as elected officials and representatives of our communities. There were a number of inaccurate remarks as of yesterday from some developers who had the audacity to talk about the issues with property taxes in hard hit communities like ours. Well, let me be very clear with that. As our property taxes in communities like Pilsen have skyrocketed, some of these same developers have received very juicy, very broad tax appeals that now are being paid by the same communities that are opening the doors, doubling up in basements and coach houses while we have children in police stations. I find that insulting. I also would like to address some more inaccuracies that again, in the sake of democracy, continue to be spread. The fact that some of these developers talk about being concerned about skyrocketing rents. Well, let me explain maybe a little bit of economics. Monopolies are not good for our economy. They are not good for even the same people who continue to demonize any efforts so that we have equity in our taxes, in our tax structures, in our revenue income. How is this democracy when we're trying to prevent a vital question around homelessness and we hear many people here talking about making sure that investment comes to the hardest hit areas of the city of Chicago? When we talk about the fifteen thousand plus residents on the west side who've been neglected by the federal government, we speak with the same passion that we speak about making sure that our city continue to invest in housing. The federal government has neglected our city for generations. And yet we want to make sure that we don't ask directly our constituents about these questions? The times of machine politics when mayors will come and crowded questions so that we can't even vote on the elected representative school board cannot be compared to the question that we see in the ballot. As someone who went to the border, and I encourage other colleagues to go to, people are not going to stop coming because this is a sanctuary title or not. People are coming to the city of Chicago because we have Republican governors who are bossing them in despite of our claims to work with other states in collaboration and the silence of the federal government. So today, what we're talking about is making sure that we invest just as much on the west side where Alderman Mitts has been vocal about making sure her constituents have access and help for constituencies what devastated by the flood. And they still do just as much as we're talking about making housing a human right in despite of the destabilization that Republican governors are inflicting in our city. Because there is a convention next year. So I ask my colleagues to stop pandering for votes and start ask, acting as elected officials. Look at the data, look at the research, and look at the facts. But what we're not going to do is allow people to demonize efforts that are intended to help south side, west side, as much as many other communities across our city. I find troubling for a developer to talk about the inaccuracy of the property taxes. Let's talk about equity so those who can afford it can pay because they're benefiting by property tax appeals that we are paying for. And let's make sure that the voters with the facts can go and vote on what's right for the city of Chicago. But this raising of tensions between communities is unacceptable. And I send the votes for those who claim to be in support of immigrant communities. We know that track record. And I remind my colleagues that the sanctuary city status was fought at won by Mayor Harold Washington. So for anybody who votes against this, just to ask the voters, please take out of your vocabulary Harold Washington. Take it out of your vocabulary. And if we want to act as elected officials, number one thing is to listen to our constituents and the suffering that they're subject to, what the GOP is trying to play games here in our own backyard. So for the sake of democracy, let's ask the voters what's right, and let's do that on the ballot. But the pandering that I hear this floor and the xenophobic comments must stop in a city like ours that protect the human rights of every resident. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, uh, Committee on Housing and Real Estate, Chairman Sigcho Lopez, I'm sorry, you don't get a break, sir.
We never get a break, but we're happy to talk and work every day for the city of Chicago. Thank you, Mr. President. Our members of the City Council are now reporting. Our members of the City Council are now reporting for your committee on housing and real estate, which held an in-person meeting on October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of seven ordinances. These include various agreements and land transactions. The following items from the Department of Assets Information and Services are grouped for convenience. Item number one, SO two two uh, zero two three dash zero 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 five oh four two. Pass a substituting committee for the acquisition of property from Albersens at eleven four one four South Halsted Street by donative agreement, indeed, including the northwest corner of one hundred and fifteenth and Halsted Street in the twenty-first ward. Item number two, zero two zero two three, zero 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 forty-nine forty, extension of intergovernmental lease agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois for General Medical for General Medical Services and Preventative Care Space at the Lower West Side Neighborhood Clinic at seventeen thirteen South Ashland in the twenty-fifth ward. Item number three, zero two zero two three dash zero 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 four nine four one, extension of the intergovernmental lease agreement with the Board of Trustees at the University of Illinois for General Medical and Administrative Space at Uptown Neighborhood Clinic, eight four one West Wilson Avenue in the forty-sixth ward. I've moved passages of these items by the first more favorable roll call vocal vote of the Committee of Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of other persons Moore, Mitchell, Mosley, Dowell, and Scott, who has to be recorded as a no vote on item number one.
Very good. I see a few hands. Gotcha. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon again, members of the City Council. I move to divide the questions separating item one from items two and three.
Chair recognizes Alderman Mo- Mosley. So there's a motion to divide um, these three items separating item number one. Um, what do you all prefer? All those in favor of separating separating these two? Okay, we've been asked for a roll call. Madam Clerk? A yes vote means you wish to separate item one from the from the three, a no and votes separately. A no vote means you wish to continue to vote all three items at the same time. Been informed um, that three distinct items, so division is not necessary. We can just go ahead with the vote so that separately. There doesn't require a roll call or a voice vote at all. We'll just move it separately. Yep. All right. The Chair recognizes. So you don't have to withdraw your motion. Thank you very much. So these items will be separated. Number one will be separated from number two and three. So what we can do is we can move forward with two and three. And then we have a list of individuals that wish to speak. I can go back to that. So how about we make our motions for two and three? Yep. So move for the passage of items two and three.
Yeah, I move then for the passage of item two and three uh, for the most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so order. Now for item number one, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mosley.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a a poem by Dr. Benjamin Elijah Mays called God's Minute. And it says that I've only just a minute, only sixty seconds in it. Forced upon me, can't refuse it, did not seek it, did not choose it. Yet it's up to me to use it. I must suffer if I lose it, give account for if I abuse it. Just a tiny little minute, yet eternity is in it. And that has been my days lately. I do understand that this is a federal issue, humanitarian crisis that we as a city are trying to solve, and it needs a federal declaration. I do understand that, yes, your administration is committed to making sure that Morgan Park Commons continue, that the tents, the base camps will be down by November twenty twenty-four, allowing us to continue. I do understand that your administration has committed to having a Chicago in temporary shelter this winter in the twenty-first ward. And I understand that despite this vote today, it doesn't change if this is coming or not. But I also understand that I cannot change my pledge to my community who have our promise that we will make these decisions together. And it's for that reason, Mr. President, that I ask to be reported as a no. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Nothing for me to say.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things come to mind with the sale because this is not just any other acquisition. What comes to mind when I look at what we're doing in the twenty-first ward over the objections of the local aldermen, by the way, something that should be relevant to each and every one of us is that we are still a city without a plan. Mr. President, I have said numerous times from here and from home that you inherited this crisis. We have worked to try to address this crisis in my own ward at Gage Park, even when it was painful because we had to do what we had to do to get people out of the police stations several months ago when it was only a hundred and sixty people living in a police station as opposed to the three thousand that are there now, the six hundred that are at O'Hare Airport's terminals sleeping on the floors and in cots. It was thirty-three degrees yesterday, and we still have people outside in tents. Now, I know we need a plan. Regardless of the politics of sanctuary, the politics of welcoming, the politics of immigration, we have to come up with a plan. The problem is none of us have heard an articulated plan and how we're going to move forward this month, two months, six months from now, where the funding is going to come to come through, who's going to pay for it, and who are going to hold responsible at the federal level? Because we know that the four million people who have crossed the border since last October are being pushed everywhere across this nation and are now re-converging back here because we are still the only city that says, come on in. We can't say come on in with nowhere to send them. We can't say come on in but sleep in the police stations, sleep in the park districts, sleep in the school basements. We have to come up with a long-term plan to address this. And to be quite frank, Mr. President, we have not done that. We are only hearing of the results of the October sixth RFP in very piecemeal manners. We know that someone in Brighton Park responded and that we're moving, but we don't know how many other locations throughout the city have taken us up on that offer to house migrants for base camps. We know that we are trying over again, the alderman's objection to put them in at the vacant jewel on one hundred and fifteenth and Halsted. We know that there are people trying to put them in a vacant Kmart at Seventieth and Pulaski. We know that there are plenty of vacant spots throughout the city of Chicago that none of us know about that are being considered. We have ordinances that are sitting. I think that we're even referred in rules that say we have to be notified when a shelter is coming our way that's going to house more than twelve people. We don't know. Our communities don't know. And by the time we hear it, we're being told it's too late. The anger that we've that we are feeling from the community isn't because of the migrants. It's because the community has been shut out from this process completely. They've been told that you will hear about it when we're done. We cannot continue down this path, Mr. President. Because as we try to figure out how to address and prevent the human crisis from becoming the human catastrophe that it already is, the opportunity for our lack of planning only grows the cost exponentially. We have a contract for nearly thirty million dollars just for six tents to hold six seventy-five hundred people. We have thousands more on the way, thousands that are here. We've talked about the thousands of of the the grift that is coming from this, from people trying to take advantage of this situation financially. We need to step back. We need to assess and we need to plan correctly. Because otherwise, this will be a continuation of an ongoing emergency where more and more money is flying out the door with nothing to show for it and within it within our communities other than a tent that can't even keep people warm past forty degrees. Mr. President, I will not be supporting this item. I will be standing with our colleague who has said no for his community. And I think that we need to take this as a broader package back to the committee where it belongs or even as a committee of the whole to have a citywide discussion on how to move forward, not just with immigration, but how we take care of those who have been sent here. Have a public discussion on this matter here in this room as we did before when we brought David Brown right here to say, what are we doing to keep people safe? Now we should have the same conversation here in this chamber with this body as a whole to say, what are we doing to keep the migrants safe? What are we? What is our commitment and what are we willing to do in the meantime in a broader fashion other than just one surprise here, one surprise there, while certain wards have to bear the brunt and other wards bear nothing? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to be recorded as no.
Very good. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rosa.
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. President. I'm not running for Congress, so I'll keep it brief. Um, if you go to the city of Chicago's website, www.chicago.gov, you can see there a very uh, well-articulated plan as it relates to the city's migrant mission. On the city's website, there's a section on frequently asked questions related to the migrant question. It is very robust. It is very lengthy. All of the questions to any answers that you may have are found there. The plan is one that uh, this city has articulated at a monthly immigration committee hearing. So kudos to Chair uh, Alderman Andre Vasquez for hosting those monthly meetings, which have been very informative. The plan has been articulated at weekly briefings with aldermen. Aldermen that are interested in knowing what the plan is can attend those weekly briefings. And the plan has also been articulated in community meetings. Look, we have to be very honest. Refugee resettlement, migrant resettlement should not be the focus of local government. It was never supposed to be that way. It's supposed to be the focus of federal government. The federal government in this moment is operating zero shelters. The state of Illinois in this moment is operating zero shelters. It is only the city of Chicago that is operating twenty-five shelters, opening one shelter every week since the start of this term. We should be proud of the effort that our city has made, but we also know that it's not enough. We desperately need more support from the federal government. We desperately need more support from the state government. But we're going to continue to do what we can to make sure that we are welcoming people with uh, the the best way that we possibly can in this moment. So again, I I think that, you know, if you have questions, there's a frequently asked question, uh, you know, uh, a page on the city of Chicago's website. You can go there. You can clearly look at that information. Um, you can also attend the immigration committee hearings. You don't have to be a committee member to attend those hearings. We all know that. Um, the questions are being asked, the questions are being answered, the plan is being clearly articulated. And I will say on this specific site, the plan is very clear. This is a free piece of land. You don't turn down a free piece of land. And this free piece of land will sooner rather than later be the Morgan Commons Development, which will be a development for the people of the Morgan Park community to make sure that there is mixed-use multifamily development there. This will be an asset for the city of Chicago. It will be an asset for the Morgan Park community. And the first step to getting there is accepting this free land. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll I'll make mine even shorter. Um, Alderman Mosley was elected to represent his community. He's doing that with a no vote. I support it. I'm also a no.
The Chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Look, I think that we can sit here all day and debate how we feel about the migrant crisis, what we believe is right, what we believe we should be doing, or raising criticisms all day. And I said this the last time, it's super easy to point fingers. That's easy to point and say, you're not doing good enough. But I haven't heard anyone propose a real solution. Show me something better. When thirty thousand Ukrainians came to the city of Chicago, did we ask the public, should we remain a sanctuary city? We didn't ask those questions. This council didn't even debate much except that we needed to do everything possible to help resettle them. You see, this is a humanitarian crisis. And it doesn't matter whether we are a sanctuary city or not. Those buses will not stop coming. And so we could debate the question. We could debate with the public, but that's still not going to help us. We're still not going to have solutions. There will still be children who are malnourished, who spend months in the desert, who are sleeping on cold floors in the city of Chicago because asking the question doesn't provide a solution. Man, it's easy to sit here and just say, we should ask the question, the public should tell us. I agree, there are things that we have to resolve for. There are issues we have to grapple with. We have to respond to the historical disinvestment in our black communities. We have to respond to the fact that we have unhoused Chicagoans. They are also gonna have to bear the cold. We have to respond to that. But that doesn't mean we should be anti-immigrant. That doesn't mean we shouldn't be a sanctuary city. That doesn't mean we shouldn't wake up every day and do what we got elected to do, and that is to govern. That is to provide solutions. Not to have a soundbite for an interview. We are a state of a thousand three hundred municipalities, and we are the only municipality bearing the brunt. If you want to find solutions, go have conversations with other mayors and other municipalities and ask them to have skin in the game. But we're angry at the wrong people. We're sitting here arguing among ourselves when we're sitting here trying to resolve for the solution. For the problem, I should say. We should be angry at our federal government who has imposed a hundred and fifty sanctions on Venezuela that has caused the migration pattern in the first place. For folks who are trying to go to Congress, I hope you try to lift those sanctions when you get there. We have real work to do, and we're sitting here debating the same thing. It's not going to provide solutions. And so I ask us to govern. You want to be mad at somebody, be mad at everyone who has chosen not to have anything to do with this problem. Let's go ask our governor for more help. Let's ask our president to lift these sanctions. Let's ask for Venezuelans to come with FEMA money the way Ukrainians did. I mean, there's things we can ask for here. There are real things we could be fighting for. But wait, wait, we're wasting time fighting each other. I'll tell you that much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Would also like to be recorded as a as a no. Alderman Mosley, you represent the twenty-first ward. I'm sure you do a good job of that, and that's why the people elected you. And I think we should start listening to the people who represent these communities. So Alderman Mosley, I stand behind you a hundred percent. No.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I am listening to a whole lot of rhetoric going on around here. But what I don't hear is us standing with the alderman of the twenty-first ward. The alderman of the twenty-first ward says he doesn't want it. Other aldermen says they didn't want it. Therefore, we should honor the wishes of the alderman of the twenty-first ward. Now, people said it, there's a plan. Yeah, there is a plan. The plan is to shove it down the twelfth ward's throat. The plan is to shove it down the The plan is to shove it down the 21st Ward's vote throat. That's the plan. That's the plan. We need to understand that, yes, we all understand this crisis. No doubt, we got that, y'all. But when the crisis is hitting the 21st Ward and then across the street, all of a sudden, they know the migrant's coming. Walgreens said, we out. November 9th, we out. And that's only going to be the beginning. Now, we say that there's promises that we're going to redevelop that area. That area been sitting vacant for over 10 years, almost 12 years. What reassurance that we have is it going to be redeveloped? Is it in writing? Or is it verbal? You need to get it in writing. That way, you can hold it feet to the fire that they're going to do something with this land. Now, yeah, I'll tell you what. Jewels moved out almost 13 years ago. Right? They've been paying taxes on that land for 12, 13 years. I give it to you too, so I won't have to pay taxes. I'll give it to you for a dollar. Here, take it. Now you don't have to pay taxes on it. So let's look at the whole picture about what's going on here, ladies and gentlemen. Let's look at the whole picture. This is going to be a detriment to the South Side of Chicago. And for a community to not have us stand with them, who represents that community, is a travesty in itself, y'all. So don't fall for the okeydoke. We've seen the smoke and mirrors before. Good luck developing that land. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Tabarez.
I just want to say that I also stand with my colleague of the 21st Ward on his vote no, so I'd like to be recorded as a no as well. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez. He has left. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hall.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Having been down to the border and back, the least common denominator is that this is a federal issue. This is an issue in which the president, Congress, hasn't figured it out. Word on the street is that the president is coming to Chicago this month. If the president cannot come to Chicago with the federal money needed to fund this crisis caused by a failed Congress and him figuring it out, I think that Chicago needs to have something to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazardo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Seems like it's every time for me, time for me to talk, somebody's in front of me. Thank you, Mr. President. I feel for you. I wouldn't want to be in your shoes every day what's going on, I'll tell you that. But nonetheless, I'm not against anyone here, but I am with someone, and that's my esteemed colleague from the 21st Ward. I stand behind him, just like I'm confident he would stand behind me if I needed his support. So I would also like to be recorded as a no.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I don't often say much. I listen. And, you know, my colleagues say that we shouldn't point fingers at the same time you throw darts. We have to learn to be mindful of one another. This is just not about us. It's about our community in which we live in. We don't sit here and bicker and argue because I don't want a sanctuary city, or she does, or he does. I mean, you want me to take a poll right now and ask, how many of you all have, how many of you all have migrants in your ward right now? Raise your hand if you have migrants in your ward. So many of us are hit with this. And so I'm saying this because I am plagued with my constituents running in my office saying, do you support this? If you support this, then we don't support you. So it's not like we want to go against the administration or anyone else in this room. But we have to stand where our voters stand. So it is about a vote, because our voters look for us to represent them. I am here to represent the 24th Ward and the 24th Ward only, but I will stand with my colleagues. If they say no, I have to support them. But it is really about, this is not our, we are in a fight that we haven't been asked to be in. And so people are running here, and we're, it's pitting us all against each other. And I think that our common goal is to love one another and to take care of one another. That is all our common goal. But things get missed because the Hispanics thinks that they're not being taken care of, the blacks thinks that they're not being taken care of. The, there's, there's issues with our Jewish community. I mean, there's always going to be a fight. We're always going to pit each other against one another, but the truth, the, why we stand here, why we're in this position, so that we take care of what's best for our wards. I can't speak for everybody else's ward, but I, I will tell you, this is not something that my community supports. And I do believe that, yeah, I can speak on Mayor Harold Washington and not support the sanctuary city because my father did a great job with supporting Harold from start to finish. So I will speak on it. I know the great work that my father did. And sometimes we do things that may not always be right at that particular time. And so I don't mean that we shouldn't be a sanctuary city because we should help, but it shouldn't be on the backs of our taxpayers. And right now, we don't have anything but to do that. So I'm asking, I'm asking the black Americans, I'm asking us black folks, you know, we see these people sitting out in the cold, yeah, the easy thing to do and to say, send them back, but they're here. And so do you just let people sit out in the cold? You know, I would love for that same money to come back to the 24th Ward and build affordable housing, build senior housing, build veteran housing. But we're stuck in a situation that, do you let these people die out on the street? At the same time, I, I mean, this is big. I have to help the people that are in my community. We have to help the people that is under law and whack. We can't refuse all. And I think that if we join the two, I don't think anybody will have a problem with it. But we can't say, hey, you're separate, you're separate, because we still have a fight here. And I can't help you because you're black and you're from Chicago, so you can't come and get warm. Everybody should be, this is a fight. If we stop pitting others against one another, I think this can work. But we're pitting each other against each other. We're pitting poor against poor, and that doesn't work. We all have to come together. This is a fight for all humanity right now, and we're stuck in the middle. We're stuck fighting against our community, telling them, I support you, I have to support the administration. It's too much. This is too much. And the burden is on all of us, and it's like an elephant is in the room. It's okay to speak out. Support your community. It's okay to speak out. We know that that exists, and everybody is being quiet. And so when you lead, you have to lead with transparency. And we're not doing that when we stay silent.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just rose where I was to speak, Mr. President, and say one simple thing. I support my colleague, and I will be voting no. But more important, I really want to thank Alder Woman from the 24th Ward for her elegant words. Over the last four years, we had a very contentious city council. We did. So much so, Mr. President, that we, we were sometimes laughable. Public laughed at the way we conducted business in here. And, and I think, and I say this to my colleagues, I think we could express our opinions and our views without throwing shade at one another. If my colleague wants to run for Congress, I applaud him. But in one sentence, we can't say, let's work together and then throw shade because he's running for Congress. So let's keep our comments. If we're going to work together, let's work together. But let's be respectful of one another, because that's why we're here, to put the people, to get the business of the people done, and not to throw shade at one another. So if you support it, you support it. If you don't, you don't. But there's never a need, never a need to attack a colleague in these chambers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sixto Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just given the fact that we need more debate on this item, I would like to make a motion to defer and publish this item, along with Alderman Ramirez Wilson.
The item will be deferred and published.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, the following negotiated cells and agreements from the Department of Planning and Development are also grouped for convenience. Item 4, 02023-0005105, negotiated cell with redevelopment agreement of vacant fire station to the Black Fire Brigade Org for development as instruction center for emergency medical services and firefighting curriculum for Chicago youth in the third ward. Item number five, intergovernmental agreement with Chicago Park District to transfer former Robert Jackson Park property at 4319 South Indiana Avenue to city in exchange for replacement land to expand existing parks or for public purpose use in the third ward. Item six, intergovernmental agreement with Chicago Transit Authority for purchases of various city parcels and easements within several tax increment and financing TIF redevelopment project areas between South 95th Street and South 130th Street for the Red Line Extension Project in the 19th and 21st Ward. And the number seven is the sale of vacant as is city-owned property at 4301, 4309, and 4329 West Madison Street to Garfield Park Wellness Support Corporation as part of the collaborative development of Sankofa Wellness Center, joining other private parcels in the 28th Ward. I've moved passage of these items by the same motion. There can be group for, for enough. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazardo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I speak, if anybody wants to come and stand in front of me, please feel free. Okay, thank you. Mr. President, I just want to comment on number four, and I didn't know it was in your ward, Pat. This, these guys, this Black Fire Brigade, I thought it was in Derek Curtis's ward. I mean, they do wonderful things for, I'm gonna call them kids because they're, I know they're teenagers and some young men, but they do so much to help these kids. And unfortunately, it's not enough to help them with the fire department job because everything's a luck of the draw now. Qualifications mean nothing. But this guy, I don't even know his last name, really. I just know him as Q, the guy that runs it. He's just a, he's just an awesome individual. He's a fireman, along with some other firefighters, you know, male and female, and he just do so much great stuff. So I proudly support item number four, and I just went on to say that.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Nugent. Our apologies. The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Dow.
Yes, thank, I just want to tell my colleagues, his last name is Curtis, Q Curtis, Quentin Curtis. Very proud that they're going to be locating or will be staying in the ward. And, Mr. President, I just wanted to use the opportunity to say that I hope during your four years here, that we look more closely at ways to get more African-American firefighters into the, into the police department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair has moved her to pass the same roll call of the previously applied item number one in finance, as well as the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. If there are no other hands, those items are approved, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finally, the Department of Housing presented their 2023 Q2 report for the five-year housing plan to the committee where no vote was taken. Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Very much, thank you. Is there a report on the committee on workforce development? There is no committee. Thank you very much. That concludes all of our committee reports then. Thank you all very much. So on the agreed-upon calendar, matters on the agreed-upon calendar, the Chair recognizes Alder Woman Harris.
Thank you. I received from Clerk Anna M. Valencia a total of 95 items proposed of the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory commemorative and tributary resolutions from Clerk Valencia from the following alderpersons. Alder Person Hall, Alder Person Harris, Alder Person Quinn, Alder Person Coleman, Alder Person Curtis, Alder Person Tabarez, Alder Person Fuentes, Alder Person Evans, Alder Person Conway, Alder Person Spazardo, Alder Person Lawson, Alder Person Gardner, Alder Person Mena Hoppenworth. And I move these in the omnibus.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Thank you very much. Now for new business, the Clerk will call the wards this month, this meeting beginning with the 50th.
Zoning ordinance amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, and exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Martin has proposed order to call on the Chicago Police Department to conduct workforce allocation study with a third-party vendor for staffing deployment and assignment decisions, which is referred to the Committee on Police and Fire. Almen Riley has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at various locations, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Vasquez has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-022, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of North Lincoln Avenue, and 4-60-023 to disallow additional package good licenses on portion of North Lincoln Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almen Vasquez and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of 2024 budget recommendations regarding wage allowance for automatic ward staff, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Two committees call, the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations and the Committee on Committees and Rules. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Almen Vasquez and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 2-8-050, by modifying annual automatic expense allowances based on rate of inflation as determined by the Consumer Price Index, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Almen Vasquez has proposed resolution to call for hearings by the Eleanor General Assembly to amend the Open Meetings Act to allow hybrid city council committee meetings, which is referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Two committees have been called, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development and the Committee on Committees and Rules. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Almen Viegas has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapter 2-92, by modifying section 2-92-070 to include definition of key performance indicators for measure, for measuring cities procurement process and certification-eligible business participation programs, and by adding a new section 2-92-100 entitled Procurement Accountability, which is referred to the Committee on Contracting Oversight. Almen Viegas also has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development for the year 2023, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Almen Conway has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-023, to disallow additional package good licenses on portion of North LaSalle Street and West Madison Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almen Rodriguez Sanchez has proposed resolution to call on U.S. President Biden to call for and facilitate peace in the Middle East and to provide for increased humanitarian assistance, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. I'm sorry, Alderman, I didn't hear you. Two committees have been called, the Committee on Health and the Committee on Public Safety. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Almen Cruz has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-023, to allow additional package good licenses on portion of West Belmont Avenue and North Laramie Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almen Telefiero has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, title 17, by modifying various sections and adding a new section 17-9-0130 regarding indoor event venues, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Telefiero also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 2-152-410, by modifying mandatory retirement age for police officers and firefighter, which is referred to the Committee on Police and Fire. Almen Burnett has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 17-4-0404, by modifying subsection 17-4-0404B regarding minimum lot area per unit reductions for certain area districts, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Burnett also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 800 West Fulton Market, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Burnett also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-023, to allow additional package good licenses on portions of West Grand Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almen Fuentes and others have proposed resolution to call on U.S. Congress to clarify U.S. tax code to prevent misuse of Puerto Rican tax incentives and to address, and to address negative economic impact on the people of Puerto Rico, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Almen Rodriguez has proposed order for the issuance of permit for signed signboards at 3315 West 26th Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Rodriguez also has proposed resolution Almond Rodriguez also has proposed resolution for support of updates to Office of Budget and Management's Uniform Guidance which is referred to Committee on Workforce Development. Almond Lee has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at thirty-two oh seven South Halsted Street which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Mitchell has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at twenty-four twenty-five East Seventy-First Street which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Hall has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Titus Allen Senior Way which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Hall also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Mimi Till Mobley Way which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Robinson and Almond Dow have opposed resolution for submission of a public question by referendum to Chicago voters at the March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four election regarding renaming of Douglas community area in honor of Frederick Douglas which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Almond Hopkins has proposed ordinance for transfer of funds within the Committee on Public Safety for the year twenty-twenty-three. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of automatic introductions.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, approval of the journals. Alderman Mitchell?
Mr. President, I am not aware of any corrections to the journals from the October eleventh, twenty-twenty-three special meeting, the October eleventh, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting, the October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three special meeting, or the October sixteen, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting, and move that it be approved.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. For unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I'm aware of one piece of unfinished business. It was filed by Alderman Lopez and calls for a vote on SO two zero two three zero 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 two nine nine zero, which was deferred and published on October fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
Very good, thank you much. Uh, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Sam Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to re-refer this to the Committee on Transportation for further consideration.
All right, there's been a motion, um, on the floor. Okay, there's been a motion, uh, to re-refer this to committee, and the Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
I move to lay that motion on the table.
Very well, so there is a motion on the floor to lay Alderwoman Sam Nugent's motion to re-refer to committee on the table. The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Mr. President, just for a point of information, um, we did get the, the number for the ordinance, but could someone refresh our memory on what the item actually is substantively?
I would absolutely do that. The Chair recognizes the sponsor, Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The item being, the item in question is substitute ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero 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 two nine 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 zero which deals with the addition of new terminology in the municipal code with regards to public libraries, which allows for their existence, codification, and permitting on the public way.
Could, could you, just a second, could you just clarify that a little bit more? Uh, when you say libraries, you're referring to, I don't want to put boards in your mouth, but just to Alderman Riley's point, we just want to make sure that we're absolutely clear what this item is.
These are, this is in reference to the public bookcases which are put on public way, city property. The ordinance which was crafted with the Law Department and myself allows for their permitting and existence on the public way through a free permit.
Okay, so there are a few folks who have their hands up, the Chair, I'll come back to you, but the, the Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Speaking for further clarification to your point, Alderman Riley, so again, like this is in a lot of our neighborhoods, we have residents who, out of the kindness and generosity of their hearts, put out free books.
This is just for clarification, this is not for debate.
Of course, sir.
Just for, just hold, hold on a second, please, direct here.
The, the question was.
Hold on a second, please. Alderman Riley asked for clarification. The sponsor offered clarification of the substance of the ordinance. If you are speaking, you are speaking to the clarification of the substance of the ordinance, we're not debating it.
One hundred percent.
Very well, please continue.
So let's speak to that, so it does define, as I'm only going to read from the ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Defines a public bookcase as a freestanding permanent structure on the sidewalk or parkway. We're familiar with these, erected for free exchange and storage of books. It goes on to say that these items would not be permissible. Uh, it says, uh, letter B, it shall be unlawful for any person to construct, install, or maintain any of the following on or above the public way without a public way permit. Uh, number eleven, it adds, public bookcase, all of this, I, I could personally understand, and I won't argue it, but then it also notes, this is ten twenty-eight, one twenty-five, only organizations, not-for-profits entities, and licensed businesses are eligible for public way permits for public bookcases.
Thank you, Alderman Laspada, for clarifying the clarity. Are there any other alders that require more clarification of the substance of this ordinance? The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
So I, I just want to make sure we're all clear, so based on the description from Alderman Laspada, we're talking about the little free libraries that we see throughout the city, is that correct?
You're correct, that is, that is correct.
And insurance for these things is, okay, uh, that, that helps very much, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you very much, so there's a motion on the floor to lay Alderwoman Sam Nugent's, uh, motion which is to re-refer this, um, on the floor, uh, uh, there's, to lay it on the table, thank you very much. And so as we prepare to vote, just for clarity, the motion to lay it on the table means if you vote yes to lay this on the table, you wish to proceed to, to, to have immediate consideration, which still would require a vote. If you vote no, um, you wish to proceed with the initial motion which was to refer this item to committee. Is everyone clear about the substance of the ordinance as well as the motion that's on the table to lay Alderwoman Nugent's motion on the table? It's a lot easier to play uno in the black community, isn't it? Madam Clerk?
I will now take a voice vote for those that did not vote on the E device, Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis is a no. Alderman Moore, not in chambers. Alderwoman Taylor. Alderwoman Taylor. Alderman Burnett.
No.
Alderman Burnett is a no. Alderman Cardona, not in chambers. Alderman Spazado. Alderman Spazado is a no. Alderwoman Silverstein.
No.
Alderman Silverstein is a no, and then Alderwoman Taylor, are you there? All right, the voting is now closed.
There are forty-two nays, there are five yays, the motion to lay the motion that Alderman Nugent to re-refer this item to committee has failed. So to the motion, all those in favor to refer this item, item SO two zero two three dash zero 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 two nine nine zero, do committee signify by saying aye? All those opposed say nay? The ayes have it. The item has been re-refered, thank you all very much. And now Alderman Mitchell, are you aware of any other further unfinished business?
Mr. President, I am not aware of any further unfinished business.
Thank you very much, what about miscellaneous business? Alderman Mitchell?
Except for the ordinance setting the date and the time for the next meeting, I am not aware of any unfinished, miscellaneous business.
Very well, considering the date and time of the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell?
I handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and the time for the next meeting.
Very much, thank you for doing that. Uh, Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Be ordained by the City Council, City of Chicago, section one, the next regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Chicago, shall be held on Tuesday, November seventh, twenty-twenty-three, beginning at eleven a.m. in the Council Chamber on the second floor in City Hall, one twenty-one North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage. Gregory Mitchell, Alderman, seventh ward.
Very well, thank you very much. Um, Alderman Mitchell, for the passage?
I move the matters and the honors be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Uh, for the reading of the, the ordinance for the next time and date, hearing no objections, so ordered. Um, for the omnibus roll call, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell. I got you. So we just moved to pass the date and time for the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
We just did that, and so now for the omnibus roll call.
Yeah, I've moved that the matters and the honors be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Very well, thank you, hearing no objections, so ordered. And then finally, Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn. Whoa, whoa, oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I do apologize here. We have a public hearing on the proposed budget. Uh, the Chair recognizes, um, for this moment, I understand there are a couple of speakers, but the Chair recognizes, um, Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. President, uh, as we prepared to go for our, uh, public hearing on the budget, um, thank you, um, move that we go out of the regular order of business in order to conduct a public hearing on the proposed executive budget.
Very well, on the motion to go out of the regular order of business, all of those in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? This motion passes. The time is now, uh, for the clerk to read the notice of the public hearing. What time is it? One forty-eight? Yeah.
The following official notice of a public hearing on the budget document, the City of Chicago, the City of the year twenty-twenty-four, was published in the Chicago Tribune on October twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three. Public notice is hereby given that the executive budget of the City of Chicago for fiscal year beginning January first, twenty-twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, was received in the Office of City Clerk from Mayor Brandon Johnson, October eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, and was submitted by the Honorable Brandon Johnson, Mayor, to City Council, City of Chicago, in a special city council meeting held on October eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. The budget document is in pamphlet form and available for inspection in the Office of City Clerk. Public notice is hereby further given that a public hearing on the executive budget will be held on Wednesday, November first, twenty-twenty-three, at eleven-thirty a.m. in the City Council Chamber and City Hall instructions for public participation are posted online at www.chicityclerk.com. If you acquire specific language combinations, including ASL interpreting, please email communityengagement@cityofchicago.org by October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three, dated at Chicago, Illinois, dated at Chicago, Illinois, this twenty-fourth day of October twenty-twenty-three, Andrea M. Valencia, City Clerk, City of Chicago.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, we have a couple of s- So we are waiting on the, uh, American, yeah, the American Sign Language interpreter, and so before I proceed, can we stand at recess for just a couple of minutes, perhaps five minutes, just to get our American Sign Language to set up? Thank you.[1471.75]
The time is now two oh five. Good afternoon. The time is now two oh five. We have two speakers who have signed up to speak. Anyone else who wishes to testify on the budget, please raise your hand in the sergeant at arms. Will add you to the list. The first witness is Willie Fleming, Jr. Please come down to the podium. Mr. Fleming. Good afternoon. Is Mr. Fleming here? Okay. Our next speaker is Sarah Wetmore. With the Civic Federation, Sarah, if you can come down. All right, the chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Do you normally they give us a like a a packet of information from the Civic Federation? Do you have that for us today?
We emailed it to all of the ward offices this morning with a link to our website, civicfed.org.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes. Well, we can, if anybody would like hard copies, please just email us and we can bring some to you as well. So, all right, well, good afternoon to all of you, Chairperson Irvin and members of the City Council. I'm Sarah Wetmore, and I am acting president of the Civic Federation, a hundred and twenty-nine-year-old government research organization. Our members represent the major corporations, institutions, and service firms in the Chicagoland region. Thank you for this opportunity today to provide the Civic Federation's perspective on the proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four City of Chicago budget. A full copy of our seventy-page analysis has been emailed to all of you and the budget staff for the City of Chicago this morning and is publicly available on our website, civicfed.org. So the Civic Federation is pleased to support the mayor's proposed sixteen point six billion dollar spending plan. It reflects the city's continued economic recovery and avoids a tax increase, while continuing to make supplemental pension payments and increasing civilian positions within the Chicago Police Department, all of which are actions that the Civic Federation commits. The city budget has benefited from the return of tourism and large events, as well as several credit rating upgrades in two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, which are all indeed reasons to be encouraged about the city's financial future. However, the city also faces a number of significant financial strains. Among these are the potential expansions of pension benefits under consideration by the Illinois General Assembly, which could have major financial implications for the city's budget and long-term finances. The Civic Federation likewise recognizes the cost of caring for migrants transported to Chicago as a critical challenge for the city, both now and in the coming fiscal year. Meanwhile, the city budget also relies on a number of nonrecurring revenues, incurring tip surpluses and prior year fund balance to help close a five hundred and thirty-eight million dollar budget gap and make ends meet. So while this budget does get the city through the coming year, we would encourage the mayor and city council to prioritize long-term financial planning and develop sustainable, long-term solutions. The Civic Federation also has ongoing concerns pertaining to the transparency of the Chicago Police Department budget, particularly regarding personnel distribution and federal consent decree compliance. We hope the new administration will make significant improvements in transparency, as crime in the city's public safety strategy remain issues of concern amongst Chicago residents and the Civic Federation. The Civic Federation also recommends that the City Council continue to improve transparency and public access in its legislative process through changes to its meeting agenda processes, as laid out in our analysis. We particularly hope to see the public comment portion of the meetings expanded to allow for more speakers, along with a better and clearer signup process for speakers, including those intending, attending in person, as well as those who submit written testimony. The Civic Federation's full report includes much more detail about the aspects of the budget we support, our concerns, as well as additional recommendations. So time will not allow me to cover all of those things right now, so I would encourage you to review the full report at your convenience. Thank you again for this opportunity, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
The chair recognizes Chairman Harris.
Thank you for coming. Do you all have any suggestions in your report laid out about how you feel public comment process should be laid out that you kind of briefly kind of go through?
Sure.
How you feel we could improve it, please?
One moment, let me find that part. All right, so these are a number of recommendations that we have, we are making along with the League of Women Voters and the B G A. So a couple of those items include posting agenda items with more than forty-eight hours of notice. There are, you know, there's other organizations in other governments allow for four days' worth of notice that would allow more time for all of you as older persons, as well as the general public to review items when they're implement, when they are introduced before the meeting occurs. We also would recommend more detailed descriptions of agenda items as they appear on the agenda. That would help, there's usually very brief descriptions, maybe just referring to the sections of the municipal code that are affected without any additional details. It would be helpful for the general public, as well as I think for all of you, for there to be a more detailed description of what these proposals would do. Again, I would refer to the Cook County Board as another local government that does provide additional details on agenda items with what they're introducing. So then, an additional thing that would be helpful is to post supplemental materials, supporting materials that all of you see, but those of us who are either watching behind our computers or maybe from home or in the council chambers here that we don't see. So it would be, it would be helpful to post those items so that folks who are home or on their cell phones can review them. And don't wait so long to post them until well after the meeting, after they've been considered.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The chair recognizes Alderman Dow. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. In your summary that I was able to read, because we just got your report this morning, you caution the city to be thoughtful about the structural imbalance in our budget as we move past this two thousand and twenty-four. Has the Civic Federation given any consideration to help us think about ways to increase revenue?
So I would say that in June, the Civic Federation released a report that we generally do during mayoral transitions. It's our financial challenges report for the City of Chicago and the new mayor. In that report, we did an analysis of the pros and cons associated with a number of different revenue items that have been proposed, either by members of the City Council, by the mayor, and by others. And the Civic Federation doesn't take positions on revenue proposals in the abstract that is outside of the context of the budget, so we can know how they're being spent and so on, but we also are always willing to help provide analysis of revenue proposals as a part of the budget and so on. Does that make, is that?
Yeah, I guess to know whether or not you've done any kind of review of best practices or strategies that other cities might use that we might think about, is that something that the Civic Federation can do?
Sure. So I'd say a couple of items to think about is to consider where the City of Chicago is an outlier. That is where the City of Chicago has a higher or lower tax rate in comparison to other cities. That can be a good way to evaluate whether a tax might be a good place to go to in terms of increasing revenue. Another thing to think about, of course, is going to be balancing the the needs of the city and funding its crucial programs, along with what the impact would be on the economy and on taxpayers. So coming to a balance there.
Forward the report that you did in July. I don't know that I've seen it.
Absolutely.
I might have overlooked it. Thank you very much.
Happy to do so.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you so much for coming to council to speak. Thank you as well. You know, we invited you last week to kind of go over some questions and get a better sense of like the Civic Federation's take. I've got a couple of questions. As it relates to transparency, right, I think every term we get a little bit better at showing the public how the sausage is made, so to speak. What recommendations do you have as far as including transparency in the budget process specifically, so like separate from like public comments?
Sure. So I think that there are a number of places where, and I completely agree, there, you know, there's always areas where the city does better in terms of providing additional context, additional information. For example, the city posted in an Excel format a rundown of all of the revenues that was extremely helpful from our perspective. So I think additional places where we might see transparency include in the, and things that would be particularly helpful for non-specialists who are reading the budget would be additional text explanations of expenditures. There's really good explanations of what's happening with revenues in the budget, that is, what's going up, what's going down, and why. There could be additional explanations of expenditures in the budget in the same way. That would be extremely helpful to a non-specialist, a member of the general public who's reading the budget. I think that in terms of, you know, other transparency items, we have some recommendations in terms of transparency in the Chicago Police Department budget. There are a number of places where we believe that it could be better conveyed to the public. The progress that the city is. the progress that the city is making in terms of implementing the consent decree. Additionally, taking, looking at how much the consent decree is going to cost going forward. And without those numbers, it's hard for the public to determine what additional kinds of hires or additional spending the city would need to make in order to completely comply with consent decree. So, those are a couple of items. There's a number of others laid out in the report.
So, when you're, when talking the police budget, right? It's $2 billion. It's out of the corporate fund, or about 40% of the funds that are going to that one department. Do you have similar recommendations for improvement as far as being able to see how those dollars are being spent? So, you actually have an effective department, rather than us just throwing more money into one without seeing how effective it is?
Precisely, and also basically taking, doing a study and showing what the staffing needs are of the department will be particularly helpful. Again, I would like to note that the Civic Federation was extremely pleased to see civilian positions, additional civilian positions included in this budget. That should help with in terms of reducing the cost of the department and also freeing up sworn officers to be deployed elsewhere.
Awesome, and then I guess kind of to piggyback on that, when we're talking about the migrant spending, I know we have conversations about the plan. A number of us have questions about the details of this plan and how it's spending. Are there similar recommendations of what you sent us as to how to improve some of the transparency there as it relates to the migrant spending?
So, I think not specifically, the Civic Federation is, you know, as a government watchdog organization, we don't, we're not able to tell the city how to, you know, spend the money on different social services to help with the migrants. But I think what our perspective is, is that, you know, there's a certain, there's a significant amount of uncertainty surrounding how much, how much caring for migrants is going to cost in the coming year. A certain amount has been appropriated for that, to the extent that the federal government, or the state, or some, or perhaps a, an epiphany happens and migrants stop getting bussed here, there would need to be a backup plan in place in order to cover those costs in the coming year.
Okay, and then lastly, as it relates to kind of finding other taxes, like income tax, what are, what are the Civic Federation's thoughts on that, or any recommendations?
So, again, we don't take position in the abstract. But you can find, again, some of that analysis in our Financial Challenges for the, for the new mayor and City Council report that we released in June and is also on our website. But it's, so these are, in terms of the income tax, were you talking about a city implemented income tax or the state's income tax?
Well, the state's one, I think we're looking at how limited we are sometimes at the city. And as we're heading into hopefully improving our relationships with Springfield each term, like being in a position where we can have those conversations. I think the more detail we get, or not detail, but just context we get from Civic Federation, I think would be extremely helpful also.
Sure, so of course, the, you know, the state, the city can't do anything to increase income taxes except get permission to impose its own city income tax. And we evaluate the pros and cons in that other report that we released. But to the extent that the, that the state might increase, it's, oh, do you mean, oh, you mean expand the amount of revenue sent to them? Yes, okay, so back in 2011, when the state imposed a higher income tax, it didn't expand the amount sent to local governments as a part of that expansion. And so, that shortfall has remained in place for many years. And to the extent that the Civic Federation does believe that the state ought to be providing the full 10% distribution to local governments, which would increase the state distribution to the City of Chicago.
I appreciate you saying that. I think you've got 50 members of the council in agreement. So, thank you for all the work that you do and look forward to kind of building more relationship. And thank you for, you know, in your new role, for the work you do. Thanks.
Good afternoon.
And congratulations on your new role. You know, you have extremely big shoes to fill.
Shoes.
Huge shoes, absolutely, but I'm sure you're up to the challenge.
Thank you.
Just got a couple of questions. You mentioned that the migrant crisis with the 150 million funds that have been set aside. Based on your analysis of the budget, we all know that that is not nowhere near enough to get us through the year. And so, we're hoping that we get federal funding or state funding to bridge the gap. However, knowing that, is this a six-month budget or is this a 12-month budget?
So, I would like to say first and foremost that the Civic Federation definitely supports the efforts that are going on to try to get the federal government to provide additional funding. It is their responsibility, it's their area of responsibility, and it certainly would be extremely helpful in the coming year if they were able to come up with additional funding. I want to put that first and foremost. And then in terms of shortfall, I think there's, again, there's a certain amount of uncertainty surrounding, you know, how much, how many people are going to be coming, you know, how, you know, how much is it going to cost? To the extent that costs end up being more than $150 million, and the state or the federal government doesn't come up with additional funding, then yes, there would need to be additional funds found by the City Council and the mayor in the coming year.
Okay, so knowing that 150 is not enough, we know we're going to need some additional funding. And so, should we be planning, or should we come up with a Plan A and B on how we're going to bridge the gap to the, to the end of the year? And I don't think we have a Plan B, or it has not been presented to us.
So, I definitely, that is what we lay out in our analysis. We do think that there should be a backup plan in the case that the federal government or the, or the state of Illinois do not come through in the coming year with additional funding.
Okay, so knowing that there's going to be a potential huge hole, is this a physical responsible budget?
So, I think that, you know, to the extent that there are, again, there is a significant amount of uncertainty surrounding what's going to be happening with the migrant crisis, you know, we believe that, that if a backup plan is identified, then this, then it certainly is sustainable.
Okay, now, now let's talk about the reserve. Because I read in the paper today where the budget director is hinting that we could possibly have to tap into the reserve. Knowing that this is not a balanced budget, do you think that we need to have something in writing in the budget to say, if we don't get the state and federal funding, that we plan on using the reserves? And then that way, we have a balanced budget, because now we're saying where the revenue source is coming from?
So, I think it's important to note that there, the City of Chicago has a couple of different reserve funds. So, there is one long-term reserve that contains the proceeds of the Skyway asset sale and the last portions of the sale of the parking meters. That's approximately $600 million, and it is a long-term reserve and is not intended to be touched. It's intended to help preserve the rating of the city, bond rating of the City of Chicago. There's also budgetary reserves, what accountants refer to as fund balance. So, that is, for example, what's, part of what's being used to make the supplemental pension contribution. And then other portions of it are intended to be dedicated to future years for those supplemental contributions as well. So, to the extent that there is additional fund balance to be identified, that's a possible backup plan. But we would strongly, we have a strong hesitancy in tapping the long-term reserve funds.
So, is your opinion that we've already been tapping the fund balance?
It's, it's in the, it's in the budget. Part of, there's about $50 million of it that are, that's specifically being used to close the $500 million budget gap.
And that's, again, that's a one-term, one-term fix that we tapped into one source of fund balance. And so, knowing that, let's look at the projection for the future. Knowing that, you know, there's no tax increase, there's no revenue increase with this budget, and we have a 500-some-odd-million-dollar hole that was this year. Knowing that we're not doing anything physically to build that, that gap, so to speak, to bridge that gap, next year's budget should be just about double, because you didn't do anything to fill this hole, and now you have the hole for next year.
Well, I mean, there were sustainable revenues included to help close the 500-and-some-million-dollar hole. There were the increased projections of revenues that should be recurring. There were reductions to expenditures and, and budget savings. So, there, the portion of the budget that is closed with one-time revenues is the portion of the budget that will be seeing a shortfall then, again, next year.
And that's the 300-and-something-million?
It would be somewhat less than that. Again, there, there are portions of some of the, of the closures that are one-time and some that aren't. So, in terms of pinning down which portions are which, we'd have to wait to see what's happening with the bond refunding and so on.
Okay, but knowing that those are all one-time fixes, you know, that's going to be carried over to the next year, no doubt.
Precisely, that'll be part of the, that is, unless there's additional revenue growth or additional expenditure reductions, yes, that will be the size of what needs to be closed next year.
And we all know that, because we still haven't received any information on, on the projections, projections can be inflated, correct?
I mean, there are, from what we understand from the Budget Office, the increases to the projections were based on a number of different things. One of them was updated revenue projections based on what happened to various tax, tourism revenues over the summer. So, they had more information, and that's what they, and additionally, there will be some big events next year and things like that. Those are what the Budget Office has said that that went into the increased projections for the coming year. So, everything about a budget is a, a
Projection.
A projection of what's going to be happening in the coming year, that could happen or not.
We also projected that NASCAR was going to bring in a bunch of funds, and that was a huge shortfall with that projection. So, you know, I've seen, I've been around a little while, and I've seen projections inflated in order to bridge the gap. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we're using these one-term, one-time fixes on a regular basis, because we're not fixing the problem.
So, and the extent to which it's possible to close the structural gap is going to depend on finding ongoing revenues, ongoing expenditure cuts, a combination of both of those items.
Okay, alrighty, well, that answers most of my questions. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you again for what you do and the organization, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other question, any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Just a quick second, thank you, Sarah, for your remarks. We appreciate them, and also would be remiss if we didn't take a moment and honor the memory of Larry Masal, who has always come up and done these speeches for us. He's a lovely man, and we loved having him speak. So, thank you today for carrying the tradition. Appreciate it. Yeah, perfect. We have another public speaker, Mr. Blakemore. Mr. Blakemore, you can come to the floor.
This is not new. Several years ago, the public would be able to come up in the committee and sit right next to Altman Burke. And when you all would get out of control and turn your backs, he would, we need order in here. So, perhaps we do need order in here. It's very important to have the budget. I know that all your elected officials are tired today. Excuse me, my mother say, you don't talk with food in your mouth. So, I didn't know this was coming up. So, I'm glad, I'm glad to be here. And I'm, I'm glad to see my black brothers and sisters here. And it's been a rollercoaster, there's been a lot of anger here. So, we need some, we need to unite and to help each other. And the budget is very, very important. And another thing, don't you have those three minutes? Oh, yeah, baby. You still have the three minutes. So, I'm glad to see my black brothers and sisters here. And I hope that you all would remember who you are and where you are and advocate for each other. I'm specifically focusing on my black elected officials. So, we want you to turn blacker than black. And we want you also to advocate that, that we will overcome the legacy of slavery. Because some of us, the chains are not on our arms, our neck, our legs, but the chains are in our head. And it's okay for us to be selfish. Self-preservation is the first law of nature. So, again, I'm, I'm glad that we all here. And when I beat up on my black sisters and brothers, I know when you, when you know better, you'll do better. So, we have to help each other. And I'm going to leave this very briefly. When Geronimo and Co-Chief begin to fight each other, that trailer tear at the end, the white man sent off both of them to the reservation. Know who you are and where you are, and we shall overcome one day, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blakemore. Is Mr. Fleming back? Is Mr.? Come up, Mr. Fleming.
All right. Had something prepared. Here we go. Good afternoon. My name is Willie J.R. Fleming. I'm the Executive Director of the Chicago Anti-Eviction Campaign and a founding member of the Chicago Independent Human Rights Council. I stand before you as a two-time Human Rights Award winner from the UN. In 2009, I had the honor of coordinating a mission by the United Nations to America. This mission was to look at the International Covenant to Eliminate Racial Discrimination, 2009. In 2009, the United Nations also came back to look at the rights to adequate housing. In 2009, I stated to the City Council, the Cook County Government, and the state of Illinois, that Chicago did not have a housing crisis due to foreclosure, that Chicago did not have a housing crisis due to the demolition of public housing. But rather, Chicago had a human rights crisis for failure to invest in a public infrastructure that could house people for generations to come. As a human rights expert, I'm saddened by this day we have in Chicago, where I see human rights violations not just taking place in terms of how migrants are being housed in Chicago, but human rights violations that are occurring because the people of the City of Chicago voices are not being heard in terms of the issue of migrants. These are human rights violations, particularly around civil and political rights. It was stated that the citizens of Chicago had elected older persons to represent them, and that these older persons had no input. Let me be clear. There is a reason why the United Nation mandates base camp to refugees. I want to use this term again. There is a reason why the United Nation mandates base camps for refugees. This is to prevent what we call civil tensions arising because of what some folks, elected officials, and citizens of Chicago deem to be territorial infringement. This is the term that you are getting away from. The United Nation does not allow for folks to leave from refugee status automatically into housing units, because we know that it would create a division similar to that you see with another ongoing territorial infringement war, Israel and Palestine, Ukraine and Russia, and Sudan. The reason why you build base camps and place folks in base camp is so that they get acclimated into the culture and society that they're integrating into. I use a terminology like this. I once told Ron when he was closing schools, you would not close a school in Israel and send them children to Palestinian territory. So, why would you close a school in a GD neighborhood and send them to a vice lord neighborhood? So, why would you close a school in a GD neighborhood and send them to a Vice Lord neighborhood? That would create territorial friction. We are seeing these same things with migrant. I am someone who actually lived in Venezuela for two months in 2006 as a guest of Hugo Chavez. Venezuela used to be a country that promoted one of the best healthcare citizen, healthcare programs for its citizens, have free housing programs for its citizens. In 2006, we went down to Venezuela to prevent the sanctions that led us to the conditions we have today. I heard an older person speak about them sanctions, right? In 2010, we invited the Afro-Venezuelans, Afro-Hondurans, and Afro-Colombians to America, particularly my office on Seventy-Fifth Street, so that we can begin a pathway of migration for those of African descent. I stand before you to tell you, I don't feel guilty for asking folks to come to America of black African descent in other countries who are being mistreated. But I will say to you, the City Council, you heard rumors, there's no rumors. Over the next four to six months, the City of Chicago will see an influx of thirty-five thousand to sixty thousand migrants to this city. The time is now. Everybody can say they don't want them, but I would tell you this, like public housing folks, when they tow down public housing, we had to go somewhere, they gonna end up going somewhere. I just ask that y'all do this in the most humane way possible, that's reflective of the City of Chicago. And remember that Chicago would be hosting a Democratic National Convention. So, how you at, every Democrat across the country will be watching, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? Okay. Great, okay. Alright, the time is now. Alright, guys, the time is now two thirty-seven. This concludes the public hearing on the proposed executive budget. The Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we return to the regular order of business.
On the motion to return to the regular order of business, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to adjourn.
Madam President, there being no further before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered, the meeting is adjourned.
I hope somebody recorded that.